Meeting practice, I would like to inform the persons attending this meeting that A) the meeting is being recorded, live streamed and made publicly available on the council's website and B) the persons attending the meeting should refrain from making any defamatory statements. To start today's proceedings, I would like to invite Father Anthony Morgan from the St George and Prince Tadros Coptic Orthodox Church to offer a prayer for council and acknowledgement of country. Could I invite everyone to please stand?
Good evening to the mayor, to the CEO, councillors, council staff, members of public. Acknowledgement of country. Before we begin proceedings, we would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors, past and present. The Karaburghul clan of Daragh nation, I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Darawel and Daragh nations. Affirmation of council. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the well-being of all Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Tonight, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council and all those associated with the good government in Liverpool. We pray. Almighty God, thank you for our life, our health and the opportunity to serve within the local government of Liverpool. Send your spirit to touch the hearts of our leaders, endow the spirit of wisdom on our mayor, councillors and all the staff that serve at Liverpool City Council with the familiar words, "The Lord bless you and keep you, the Lord make his face shine upon you and be gracious to you, the Lord lift up his countenance upon you and give you peace." Accept the great goodness that our council strives for and its decisions it makes for the greater goodness of the city of Liverpool. Inspire our leaders to increase the prosperity of which whom they represent. Grant each member talents by which they multiply their fruits. May we please you, our God, this day and hear us, Almighty God. Amen. Acknowledgement of country. Before we begin proceedings, we would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors, past and present. The Karaburu Ghul clan of Daragh Nation, I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Darawel and Daragh nations. Affirmation of council. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the well-being of all Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Tonight, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with the good government in Liverpool. We pray. Almighty God, thank you for our life, our health and the opportunity to serve within the local government of Liverpool. Send your spirit to touch the hearts of our leaders, endow the spirit of wisdom on our mayor, councillors and all the staff that serve at Liverpool City Council with the familiar words, "The Lord bless you and keep you, the Lord make his face shine upon you and be gracious to you, the Lord lift up his countenance upon you and give you peace." Accept the great goodness that our council strives for and its decisions it makes for the greater goodness of the city of Liverpool. Inspire our leaders to increase the prosperity of which whom they represent. Grant each member talents by which they multiply their fruits. May we please you, our God, this day and hear us, Almighty God. Amen.
Thank you, Father. Now, could I ask someone to remain standing while we see the National Anthem? And today, we are honoured to have Michaela Anne Ellington from Miller Technology School who will lead us in National Anthem.
Australians, oh, let us rejoice, for we are one and free. With golden soil and wealth for toil, our home is girt by sea. Our land abounds in nature's gifts of beauty, rich and rare. In history's page, let every stage advance Australia fair. In joyful strains, then let us sing, advance Australia fair. Beneath our radiant southern cross, we'll toil with hearts and hands, to make this common wealth of ours renowned of all the lands. For those who've come across the seas with boundless plains to share, with courage, let us all combine to advance Australia fair. In joyful strains, then let us sing, advance Australia fair.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. And thank you very much, Michaela. We appreciate you taking the time here and sharing your talent with us. Next, we have councillors attending remotely, councillor Green, happy to move that way. Seconded councillor McNaul, in discussion, all those in favour, against, declare it carried. Do we have any, there are no apologies and thankfully there are no condolences. The next item is the confirmation of the minutes of the council meeting held on the 21st of May 2025. Have a mover that way, mover councillor Green, seconded deputy mayor, any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it unanimous carried. Are there any declarations of interest? No declarations of interest. There are no speakers in the public forum. And we have six mayoral minutes. I'll move it quickly through. Great. The first one is a tribute to Professor Les Bouquet AM. Liverpool aspires to be a centre of innovation and Liverpool City Council is proud to be a founding member of Liverpool Innovation Precinct. Among the other visionaries who helped establish the precinct is Professor Les Bouquet AM, a passionate advocate for a world-class health research and education hub that would serve not only the communities of Liverpool and South West Sydney, but also make an impact globally. Professor Bouquet has been instrumental in turning that vision into reality. As the founding director of the South West Institute for Robotics and Automation in Health, he brought international expertise to rectal cancer surgery and a research focus on early diagnosis of bowel cancer, surgical outcomes, inflammatory bowel disease and integration of robotics and automation into healthcare. Before his work with the Ingham Institute and Liverpool Hospital, Professor Bouquet held key positions at the St Bartholomew's Hospital in London, Sal Grinska University Hospital in Gothenburg and the Cleveland Clinic Foundation. He later served as head of surgery and associate dean of surgical sciences at the University of Sydney's Faculty of Medicine before joining Western City University. In recognition of his extraordinary service to medicine as a corelectro surgeon, educator, researcher and administrator, Professor Bouquet was awarded the Order of Australia Medal. He has also received honorary degrees from several international universities and professional societies. Professor Bouquet recently announced his retirement and will step down from the Ingham Institute at the end of June. For over a decade, he has been a staunch advocate for Liverpool, always willing to share his knowledge, mentor the next generation and help shape the future of healthcare and education in our city. His infectious passion for innovation, his unwavering dedication and of course, his trademark bow ties will leave an enduring legacy, not only in Liverpool, but in the wider world of medical research and global health advancement. And I'd like to move the council, and there's his bow tie, if you haven't seen him before. And there's, I'd like to move that council congratulate Professor Bouquet of his years of service to health and research and wish him the absolute best on his retirement. Two, write to Professor Bouquet and congratulate him. Any discussion? Okay. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against unanimous. Yep. Can we bring up that one, please? This one's regarding Professor Max Liu A O appointed as a vice chancellor of the University Wollongong. I would like to acknowledge the recent appointment of Professor Max Liu A O as a sixth vice chancellor and president of the University of Wollongong, coinciding with the university's 50th anniversary. Professor Liu is an internationally respected academic leader and chemical engineer with over 35 years of experience in higher education and research. His leadership at the University of Surrey in the United Kingdom and now at UAW reflects a strong commitment to innovation, inclusion and community engagement. Liverpool has been proud to host a UAW campus in our city centre, offering world-class education and strengthening the economic and social fabric of our region. We welcome Professor Liu's appointment as an opportunity to deepen this relationship and work together to ensure Western Sydney students continue to access quality higher education close to home. On behalf of Liverpool City Council, I'd like to extend our congratulations to Professor Liu and look forward to working with him in advance to advance education, research and innovation in our city. And I'd like to move that council, and note the appointment of Professor Max Liu A O as the vice chancellor and president of the University of Wollongong. Two, congratulate Professor Liu on behalf of the city of Liverpool. And three, write to Professor Liu to welcome him to this new role and express council's continued commitment to collaboration with the University of Wollongong. Any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it carried. The next one is a congratulations to Sonia Vujinic, the finalist in the 2025 Seven News Young Achievers Awards. I wish to formally acknowledge and extend heartfelt congratulations to Miss Sonia Vujinic of Liverpool, who has been recognised as a finalist in the 2025 Seven News Young Achiever Awards for New South Wales and the Australian Capital Territory, an event that was attended by Deputy Mayor, councillor Peter Hall on behalf of council. Miss Vujinic's dedication to youth advocacy and community empowerment is truly commendable. As an executive member of Team, sorry, of Teach, Learn, Grow, she played a pivotal role in expanding the programme's reach into New South Wales, significantly increasing volunteer participation and enhancing educational support for students in need. In addition to her work with Teach, Learn and Grow, the New South Wales Youth Advisory Council's Multi-Health Initiative providing valuable insights and advice to government leaders on critical youth issues. Miss Vujinic embodies the spirit, embodies the spirit of leadership and service that enriches our community. Her commitment to education, mental health advocacy and youth empowerment serve as an inspiration to all. And I'd like to formally move that council formally congratulate Miss Sonia Vujinic on her recognition as a finalist in the 2025 Seven News Young Achiever Awards. Two, acknowledges her significant contributions to youth advocacy, education and community service within Liverpool and beyond. And three, that a certificate of recognition be presented to Miss Vujinic by the mayor and deputy mayor in appreciation of her service to the Liverpool community. Is there any, and I formally like to move that way, any discussion? I'd like to put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it unanimous. And if I can invite Sonia to come and join us, please. Give her a round of applause indeed. And I have to formally applaudise, it's Vujinic, the J is silent, so sorry.
Could I just say a few things, Mr Mayor?
Yes, please, Deputy Mayor.
I did attend that Channel Seven Young Achievers Award, my wife and I, and we were very impressed with the number of people that were there. It was a really, really good event. And my wife being one of these forthright people, decided to find out where Sonia sat. And she went looking for her and finally found her and then got me to come over and say hello. Well, I can honestly say she has a very, very bubbly personality. It was a pleasure to meet her and her friends. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next mayoral minute is regarding Hoxton Park Industries and celebrating their 60 years of service. It is with great pride that I bring to council's attention a significant milestone in our community. This year marks the 60th anniversary of Hoxton Industries, a cornerstone of Hoxton Park and the broader Liverpool region. Established in 1969, Hoxton Industries has grown into a leading provider of packaging, warehousing and recycling solutions. Their services encompass co-packing, string wrapping, palletisation, de-palletising, among others. Beyond their commercial success, Hoxton Industries stands out for its unwavering commitment to social responsibility. As a registered charity and Australian disability enterprise, they have been instrumental in providing employment opportunities for people with disabilities and others facing barriers to mainstream employment. Over the past six decades, Hoxton Industries has not only contributed to our local economy, but has also fostered an inclusive community where every individual is valued and empowered. Their dedication to ethical practices and community engagement sets a benchmark for businesses across the region. And I would like to move that council formally acknowledges and congratulates Hoxton Industries on the 60th anniversary and two, recognises their outstanding contributions to employment inclusivity, environmental sustainability and community development. Is there any discussion? I'd like to put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare unanimous. This one is regarding the King's Honours recipients. I take this opportunity to acknowledge and congratulate three outstanding Australians who have been recognised in the 2025 King's Birthday Honours for their exceptional contributions to our nation. Firstly is Professor Jennifer Westercott A O, who has been appointed a companion of the Order of Australia AC, the highest level of the order, for distinguished service to the public administration, business and policy reform. Professor Westercott's decades of leadership in both the public and private sector have shaped national conversations on economic development, social inclusion and infrastructure. Professor Westercott's contributions have been particularly significant for Liverpool. As a key figure in the establishment of Bradfield, the new high-tech city being developed near the Western Sydney International Airport, she has played a vital role in shaping one of the most transformative infrastructure and innovation projects in our nation's history. Her leadership as the chancellor of Western City University continues to drive positive outcomes for education, research and economic participation across our region. Next is Miss Kathleen Margaret Smith O A M, who has been awarded the Medal of the Order of Australia for her dedicated service to the Liverpool community. Miss Smith's longstanding involvement in local community organisations, particularly in the fields of education and aged care, exemplifies the spirit of service and compassion. Her tireless advocacy has improved the lives of countless residents and embodies the values we hold dear in Liverpool. These honours serve as a powerful reminder of the impact individuals can have when they dedicate themselves to serving others. On behalf of Liverpool City Council, I extend our heartfelt congratulations and appreciation to both Professor Westercott and Miss Smith. Their achievements are a source of great pride for our community and country. Next is Mr Robert Fleetham O A M, who has been awarded the Medal of the Order of Australia in recognition of his exceptional service to sports administration and the Moorbank community. Bob, as he is more affectionately known, was a foundational figure in Liverpool's sporting landscape. He co-founded the Moorbank Rams Junior Rugby League club in early 19, in the 1990s and served as the president from 1975 to 1994. His leadership extended to the Moorbank Sports Club, where he was the driving force behind its construction in 1994, and served as president from 1995 to 2019 and again from 2020 to 2021. Under Bob's stewardship, the club became a cornerstone of the community, supporting thousands of young athletes across various sports. His dedication was not limited to sports. He also championed numerous community programmes and initiatives, leaving an indelible mark on Moorbank and its residents. In honour of his enduring legacy, the Moorbank Sports Club established the Bob Fleetham Scholarship, providing financial assistance to local students pursuing higher education. Bob's passing in August 2024 was a profound loss to our community. This national recognition serves as a testament to his unwavering commitment and lasting impact of his contributions. And I'd like to move that council, right to all recipients, and to formally acknowledge, encourage them on their well-deserved recognition and hold a small civic reception to be funded from the civics programme budget in their recognition. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare it carried. And lastly, is a commemoration of the 30th anniversary of the genocide in Siburnitska. Council has received a formal request from the consulate of Bosnia and Herzegovina, seeking support to commemorate the 30th anniversary of the Siburnitska genocide. This anniversary remains a deeply significant and painful milestone for the Bosnian community, both globally and here in Liverpool. Many families in our local area continue to carry the trauma of these events and is feeling that council supports their efforts to remember, reflect and educate. The proposal is that council provides in-kind support for a commemorative event to be held at Liverpool Powerhouse on the 5th of July 2025 or other date in July. The event will include a visual display, light entertainment and a film screening and will be open to the broader community in the spirit of remembrance, reflection and solidarity. The estimated value of council's in-kind contribution, which includes waiving venue hire fees and providing staff resources, i.e. non-cash, is approximately $5,000. And I would like to move that council endorses its support for the commemoration of the 30th anniversary of the Siburnitska genocide to be held at Liverpool Powerhouse on the 5th of July 2025 or other date in July. Two, provides in-kind assistance to the value of approximately $5,000 covering venue hire and staffing resources. Three, acknowledges the ongoing trauma experienced by members of the Bosnian community and reaffirms its commitment to supporting multicultural communities through events that promote education, remembrance and unity. And I'd formally like to move that way. Is there any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare unanimous. Thank you, everyone. We'll now move into the agenda. The first item is Plan Zero.
Mr Mayor?
Yeah, sorry, councillor McNaul.
I'd like to move that we actually bring the item CFD 01 forward to be the first item to be dealt with.
Yep. Do you have a second for that? Seconded councillor AJ. In discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it carried. So that's the budget. So for those who are going through the books, that is book five of the agenda. Book five, page 14, recommendation page 15. And I'd like to move the motion with one amendment to it. Well, sorry, not amendment, with just one adjustment. Is that council adds $50,000 for defibrillator installations as per councillor Sevsky's previous motions. Is there a seconder? Seconded councillor McNaul. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Sevsky?
As much as I like to support this, in particular the defibrillator, I have to look at these submissions. At the time of writing their report, apparently there was 177 written submissions. 148 were submitted.
So just to clarify, you're speaking against the motion?
Correct.
Yep, okay, yep.
148 were submitted by myself, four were submitted by the mayor, 23 were submitted by corporate planning. Now, the last council meeting, I actually asked the question, how many written submissions are normally received for a budget from the public? And I think the answer was 10. Well, I mean, 148 just from my side, that's 15 times the regular amount of submissions that council normally receives, which is probably a historic high with 100% of those submissions that I'd submitted were definitely against a rate increase and in particular the festivals. Now, by taking something out to a public submission, we can't ignore what the community wants. And that's the reason why we sit in this chamber is to represent the community. In particular, if we have a look at the summary of the key categories, objection to 6% pay rise, 155 submissions. Objection to $3.2 million festival budget, 83 submissions. There was even an objection to the overseas donations, received 13 objections. Now, there's been more than that. I've received over 400 calls, SMSs, Facebook posts. But unfortunately, I ran out of time to put them all together in an individual submission. The outrage in the community over this budget, in my opinion, is unprecedented and definitely can't be ignored. Yet, there's been no changes to reflect this sentiment. So what's the point of going to the community and asking for their opinion if we're going to ignore their opinion? The community do not want a rate rise. The community do not want their rates being spent on festivals to that veracity. The community wants parks, cleanliness in the city and better roads. That's why I'm against this budget, as it's a reflection, it's not a reflection of what the community wants. Thank you.
Speakers, councillor McNaught.
I'm happy to speak. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank staff particularly for the work on this budget. We've done a lot of workshops, we've done a lot of consultation. We've spent a lot of time invested in this. The councillors who also attended those workshops and we went through and, you know, in a really authentic way have come up with this budget that I'm really pleased that we have landed on. I do thank the mayor and councillor Restovski for the inclusion of the defibrillator. I think that's important, the defibrillator budget. You know, we've worked hard to get to the position that we're in now and I'm very pleased that this is where we have landed after all of that work. And again, I just thank staff for the hours and hours that have gone into this. And I commend them for their work on the budget. Thank you.
Any other further discussion? Councillor Green, sorry, my apologies for not...
That's okay.
Is your hand up?
Yes, it is. Yes, I would also like to speak in support of the budget. I think we all, the majority of councillors, worked cooperatively and collaboratively with our executive team and staff and the CEO in developing a budget that, as councillor McNaught has said, is authentic and is one that I'm very happy to stand behind. In terms of the festivals, I hear what councillor Restovski has to say. But to be honest, with a growth council and a council that is also looking forward to the international airport, to withdraw, cut back, stop, festivals at this stage would be a foolish move, given, you know, that even the state government has recognized that festivals in local government areas are important in terms of social and economic benefit when there's $1 million already out on the table. But on the whole, I fully support the budget and I also thank and acknowledge the work, hard work of council staff, of the executive leadership team, of the CEO and the majority of councillors that in good faith have worked on it.
Thank you, councillor Green. Councillor Conneeb?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the fact that this item's been moved up in the agenda, I'd ask that Corp 01 also be moved up. And the reason for that is, is because it's recommended as per the book that simultaneously, the timing of this particular item comes alongside with the timing of a proposed increase to both the rate of the mayor and the rate of the councillors. And I think it's important to discuss the both in tandem. The reason I say that is because I propose with that particular motion that we move, that we, and I'm only speaking for myself here, that we move that nobody receive a particular rate rise. For me, that whilst IPART has recommended a particular increase and whilst I accept that that's IPART's position, I certainly don't feel comfortable with giving...
I just have a point of order.
If I could just finish. I don't see what I've said out of line. I'm asking that you move an item up to this one because both had to do with monetary.
Councillor Conneeb, just with regards to that, we will have to move, whilst we're in debate about this item, once this matter concludes, you can bring that up straight away afterwards. I get your point that that does have a budget impact.
Well, it does because if you're moving $50,000 of defibrillators, we've had budget workshops, it wasn't raised then. And whilst I'm not against it fundamentally, there is an item there that if you look at the increases for both councillors, on an aggregate basis, it seems to be in the sum of about $10,000. And for the mayor, an increase of three, that's $13,000. So we're discussing and we're moving this budget forward. To me, this is an item in the agenda that should be moved before that. We've got no issues with the budget being dealt with now, but this is an item that I'd be asking to be dealt with at the same time.
There is no way of dealing with them. They're two separate motions. They're two separate agenda items on that logic than any item that requires budget expenditure should be dealt with at the same time.
Well, I think that's appropriate at this meeting. But my position is this particular one, where it's recommended as per the book that we give ourselves a pay rise in the current climate where we're asking residents to pay more. It doesn't, it just makes, it's nonsensical. So I would think that it'd be appropriate that whilst, if the community are watching, that they watch what the particular vote is on that aspect because it's...
Yeah, just procedurally, there's no mechanism.
So procedurally, do you think that it's more appropriate then to do with that aspect first because it may impact the determination of this budget?
You know, what did you say, 13,000?
Correct.
Out of 521 million, 523 million? You know, I get your point. Yes, it is an impact, but it's putting it in perspective.
I don't think, I don't think the perspective of a pay rise to councillors and the mayor while we're increasing rates, I think the perspective of the community matters and I think it should be dealt with first.
Okay. At the moment, we have a motion that's been moved and seconded. We've had one speaker for, we've had one speaker against, right? I hear your point, but we're currently within an item that is already on the floor. We have to deal with this item first. So if you want to...
Mr. Mayor, it's a budgetary item. And I say that with respect because it's a factor that us as council and you as the mayor have to execute properly. This is a, it's a big budget, as you've said, and it's something that factors into it. And there's no issue with it being considered first. It's a decision for you to make, of course, but...
Yeah. So I'm saying that, once again, procedurally, as you know, there is, you know, there's procedures.
We're aware of the procedure. We had this discussion at the last council meeting. I'm familiar with the procedure. All I'm doing is highlighting to you that there's an item in the agenda that factors in an increase to pay of councillors and the mayor in circumstances where, at the same time, there's an IPART recommendation to increase rates. I just only think it's fair to the community that it be heard at the same time. I don't think it's out of order. It's a matter for you. But if not, if not, I propose to deal with that matter first and then this matter.
Yeah, okay. Well, so once again, we are currently in an item.
So is your position that you hear that matter secondary to this?
Yes, after this motion, whatever outcome happens.
You're content with me moving that forward?
Yeah, 100%. You can move it forward, you can move that. But you have to move it once we finish this matter.
But if we're doing that, couldn't we just do it now?
You would have to defer this item because we've already started the discussion and the debate within this matter.
Well, then I'll move that this item be deferred till after that item's dealt with.
Yep. Now, and that becomes, becomes a foreshadowed motion, doesn't it? If it's, now that it's already there, so that's a foreshadowed motion. So your foreshadowed motion, to be specific, councillor Conneeb, is?
Yes.
Is that defer this matter?
Until budgetary items in this agenda are dealt with, in particular that one.
Yep. So, okay, so if you can just spell that out, please.
Defer this item until the budgetary items in this agenda are dealt with.
Okay. So that means it probably becomes the last item on the agenda then?
I don't see an issue with it. We've all workshopped on it. We've all had our views on it. I don't think it catches anybody by surprise, people's position.
Just verifying what that, what it translates into.
It's going to be dealt with today. I don't see the rush with dealing with it as the first item of the agenda.
All right. So you have, do you have a second for that? Seconded councillor Restovski. Okay. So that's okay. So that becomes a foreshadowed motion. Okay. I get it now. We've had one speaker for, one speaker against. Two, four? Oh, yeah, sorry. My apologies, councillor Green, sorry. Is there a way that we can keep her on the screen, if possible, please? Are there any of the speakers for or against? Councillor Monahan? So councillor Conneeb, can you turn off your microphone, please?
Yes, I'm happy to speak for the motion and intend on voting for, to pass the budget. But do think that it's important to highlight the substantial number of submissions that have come into council. I recall the previous meeting where the question was asked, how many submissions are ordinarily received? And the answer was in the vicinity of 10. You'd have to concede that 177 submissions are a significant degree greater than what we ordinarily as a council receive in relation to submissions, probably to any item, let alone a budget in particular. So I think it's fair and it's appropriate that we highlight particularly a number of the concerns that the community has raised and the large majority of those in objection to the 6% rate increase in circumstances where cost of living is significant. This will be on the back of a rate, a significant rate increase in the previous year. And this is coupled with a significant number of submissions in relation to other specific matters about council being Austral specific concerns. The book at page 20 has 29 concerns. Requests to redirect funds for essential services are 28 submissions. Requests for other specific projects, in fact, specific projects or specific concerns in relation to overdevelopment and Waddell Grove reaches seven submissions, when ordinarily we receive somewhere in the vicinity of 10. Again, whilst I intend on supporting the budget, I think it's fair to note and it's the right thing to do that we're meant to reflect the views of the community and we should be at least noting, again, at the very least, the significant concern that people have about some of these, about some of the matters in the budget. And I accept that the rate increase particularly is something that's recommended and it's an ordinary practice of councils to take IPART up on its offer essentially of a 6% increase. It's not a particular provision or aspect of the budget that I would support, but it's not something that I can excise out of it and vote separately. But I would like to put that on the public record, my vehement opposition to such a significant increase in the rates. But given the practical nature of how this budget works, I can't vote against the whole thing on the basis of one objection. But I would like to note that purely for the public record and I think it's appropriate that everyone who's made a submission has that submission acknowledged and recognized and it's not something that everyone here ignores.
Thank you. Are there any of the speakers for or against? All right. Well, I'm happy to have the right of reply and I want to echo the statements of councillor McNaught and councillor Green. Thank the staff for their work and effort in the significant amounts of hours of preparing this budget as a small surplus balance budget. So congratulations to you, CEO. I think it's a very, it's a very good start to the term of council and to all the councils supporting it and to yourself, CEO, and your team in preparing it. You know, we've all gone through significant inflationary pressures. Council definitely has that, but highlights of the budget, over $240 million being invested in infrastructure, in parks. That's a record amount. We've never spent that much money on parks. We've never spent that much money in community facilities. Record spending on roads, very significant. And then the operational budget, you know, services are constantly being improved, increased. We're going to be one of the many council, or not the many, one of the few councils that now have FOGO as of the 7th of July. So that's a positive thing as well as everything else that's happening down at 600 Cow Pasture Road and the Circular Economy Centre. So it's very positive. There are good things that are out there. So I think it's going to be, it'll be really good. On the issue, just on Austral, if I can just point out, councillor Monahan as well, just in the last three, in the last three years alone, council has invested over $87.2 million in Austral alone, just on land acquisitions, let alone the other things that we have done. I see the roundabouts are being built for that. Once again, a small investment, we're making significant improvements in the safety of that area, plus all the footpaths that we did. There's definitely a lot more that has to be done. But I think considering we're bearing the burden of all the growth that has to happen in Sydney, a lot of the growth, I think that's some good positive improvements there. Because I think definitely if you look, if you were to compare Austral expenditure to any other suburb, by far it's, with a country mile, it is much, 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 much greater. I do acknowledge, yes, there are submissions that were made in doing so, more than average. I should also point out that there was a, I think there was a prize going on for state-of- origin tickets for whoever makes submission to the budget. I think it's the first time we've seen that. But there's 249,000 people who are going out there in our community who are happy to progress and did not feel fit to go out there and do that. And yes, I'm sure nobody wants to see increases in expenditure, but the reality is when you have a $100 million wage budget with a 3%, a 3.5% automatic increase in wages as per the award, you can see where the money goes, let alone cost of material and everything that increases. But the main thing is that, you know, there's positivity. With our biggest liability with respect to this building, you know, this building is costing council, just in interest cost, $21,000 per day. And that's been like that for a good, a fair bit of time. But thankfully with our fully tenanted, fully tenanted university wall along here, that's going to be saving. So we have spent a lot of money on interest, but that's now been turned around. So once again, well done to you, CEO and your executive team and all the team at council for sorting that out. So I think it's positive and, you know, this is, once again, it's a record, 520-plus million dollars that's going to be invested in Liverpool for our community. And I strongly recommend this budget be supported. All right. That being said, I now would like to put forward the motion. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Against, I declare the budget carried.
Division, please.
I just want to reflect, if we're going to have that vote again, I understood that it was a foreshadowed motion being put. If that vote, I'm wanting to support the budget, but the foreshadowed motion being dealt with at a later piece.
The foreshadow happens if the original motion lapses. So if the original motion gets voted down, then we deal with the foreshadowed motion. So anyway, there's been a division that's been called. So all those in favor, please stand. Those against? Declare the motion carried. Now councillor Conneeb, would you now like to bring forward that item? So what was it again? Sorry. Corp 01? Corp 01?
Happy to second it.
Move that Corp 01 be brought forward. Corp 01 be brought forward, which move councillor Conneeb, second councillor Monahan. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favor, to bring the matter forward. Those against, okay. So now Corp 01, Logum in the Remuneration Tribunal, Mayor and Council fees, page 134, page nine, with recommendation of page 134.
I'd like to move that council receives and notes the annual determination and agrees to maintain the current fees payable to the mayor and councillors. To maintain the current fees payable to the mayor and councillors.
Seconded councillor, move councillor Monahan. Seconded councillor Kenee. Councillor Monahan, would you like to speak for your motion?
Uh, yes, we've just had the budget, uh, we've just passed the budget, I put it clearly on the public record that I've. Uh, had always intended on supporting that, passing it, um, despite the fact, uh, of course, the reservations about and. Withdraw that vehement opposition to a six percent rate increase, but for the practical fact that it can't be excised. Out of the budget and voted on its, uh, own, it's a part of a significant plan, it's a part of a plan that. Council staff have put together and councillors have worked on, um, over a significant period of time. Um, but noted for, for, as I said, the record that, um, it's not something that. I even personally endorse or support, um, it's a practical fact of, of the budget. Um, but in relation to this matter, and I say that they are linked, um, and that it's appropriate to deal with them one after the other, um. It's not appropriate in the circumstances that we be giving ourselves a pay increase when we've just paid. Uh, when we've just, uh, passed a six percent pay, uh, six percent rate increase. Um, for the rate payers of Liverpool, I don't see in any way, shape or form that that's appropriate. Um, uh, that's from my personal perspective, I don't see how. Uh, that's a tenable position for council, it's an appropriate position, uh, for council to be taking, uh, we are. Remunerated with a modest fee, uh, for our services, but that's not the reason why we're here, I don't think anyone would. Disagree with the fact that we're here to serve the community, um, and that our fee really pays, it plays no role in that. And I don't see why we should be getting, um, any increase, one, two, three percent, nothing is appropriate in the circumstances.
Any other speakers? Councillor McNaul?
I have a foreshadowed motion, Mr Mayor.
Uh, yes, council, what is your foreshadowed motion?
As per the book, thank you.
Uh, do you have a second for that?
Happy to second.
Seconding councillor Hart. Alright, so we'll deal with the original motion first. Are there any of the speakers? Councillor Kenee?
Yeah, look, I'll, I'll speak, uh, uh, for, uh, the motion. Um, that I've seconded, um, now on the basis that there's been a foreshadowed motion, uh, to adopt a pay increase. I just do not see on. Any planet how we can support an IPAD increase to every single resident and rate payer in Liverpool. But think it's appropriate to put an extra thousand dollars in our pockets at the exact same meeting. You couldn't script this stuff, it is out of line, it's not appropriate. We're not here to fill our pockets, we're here to serve the community, that's why we put our hands up. For this responsibility, for this role, that is important and to give ourselves an increase. The way it's been foreshadowed, I, I'm vehemently against.
Any other speakers for or against? Uh, the motion? Well, okay. Alright, all good, we'll put the motion, uh, first. Um, uh, all those in favour, uh, of the motion as moved by councillor, um, Kenee and Monahan, please raise your hands. Against. Declare motion lost. Division, division's been called. All those in favour? Yep, those against? Declare the motion carried. Next item is. So we'll move on to plan zero one, which. Um, page fifty-six, tab one with recognition on page fifty-six.
Mr Mayor, the motion?
Yes, councillor McNaul.
Move to defer as per the memo received this afternoon.
Do you have a seconder? Seconding councillor Kenee, any discussion?
Look, not that I'm against, uh, it was just deputy mayor that put his hand up, not, not that I'm against deferring it, but just for the record to reflect correctly.
Yep, alright, no discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, to defer, against declare carried. Next item is plan zero two, page fifty-nine, tab two with recognition on page sixty.
I, um, have a motion. If I can get it onto the screen.
Yep, uh, is there a second for the motion?
Yeah, yes, in the interest of debate, yes, I'll second it.
Seconding councillor Monahan.
If it's possible to ask, um, some questions at this stage now, with a mover and a seconder. Um, on page sixty-five, there's a table. Uh, that has, that reads CPP amendments. And it's got, um, headings across the top, land use, current rural, uh, current other, and then proposed. Um, my questions to, uh, the CEO. Can the changes in those figures, um, be explained?
Uh, thanks, through the, uh, through the chair, I'll just refer that to, actually, I think the author of the document here, so I'll refer that to, um, Mark Hannan.
Uh, this is through the, uh, through, through the chair, the CEO. Um, in terms of the, the changes that are proposed, uh, they've been benchmarked with our neighbouring councils, um, so. The changes in, in the draft CPP, we're looking at changing the definition of the adjoining, adjoining neighbours. Joining properties, which, um, you can see are in the, um, that is shown graphically, bear with me. Graphically on page sixty-four, um, so that's the main change, that's reverting to what was previously there. Um, in the previous iteration of the Community Participation Plan. Um, in terms of the table there, so we've got the, what the current notification is under the current version of the CPP. Um, what's being proposed for the rural, um, rural, rural land uses across the LGA. Every other land use is in the other column, so you can see that they, that's what, what we're talking about. So if we take amusement centre, which is the first one. Uh, if an amusement centre is in a rural land, it's five hundred metres, uh, in terms of notification, under the current, under the proposed changes. It would be a hundred metres, similarly in the other land uses, non-rural, two hundred metres, it'll be reduced down to fifty metres in the current. Uh, in the proposed changes.
Um, does that mean that we're reducing the radius in which we have to notify or council? Or, um, any developers have to notify, um, adjoining. Land users about proposed, um, developments on that land?
Uh, through the CEO, uh, yes, that, that is correct, uh, we've done some benchmarking. The genesis of this review had looked at, um, a number of examples where we had extensively, uh, notified. And probably, probably too much, this is, this is bringing, bringing that back to be more consistent with our, our neighbouring councils. But yes, in some instances, that, that has resulted in a reduction in the number of, uh, in the, in the catchment for notification, in others it has increased.
Um, one, one thing I, I'd like to say in relation to this notification, it's, in my personal opinion, you can never have too much. Notification. If you have a look at the transport depot, currently it's two hundred metres. We're proposing it down to seventy-five metres now, I've seen plenty of instances where a lot of these transport depots are twenty-four hours a day. And the trucks, obviously they can't slow down straight away, they take several hundred metres to slow down, their brakes make a lot of noise, the cargo. Um, it's not fair to the community to reduce that when. A lot of the queries that we are getting is from these truck depots in particular. And I can tell you, I, I don't know whether a crematorium is going to come up, but you've got here from two hundred metres down to a hundred metres. That person at a hundred and one metres would definitely want to know if there's a crematorium, um, coming or not, so. There is nothing wrong with notifying the community, the more, it should be best practice, the more the better, and I. Don't believe we should be reducing it based on those ones specifically, the other ones I don't have a problem with, but they're the ones where we get most of the, um, issues from.
Um, Mr Mayor, I think councillor Green has a question.
Sorry, councillor Green?
Um, I just, I do have a question, I understood from the presentation that was given to councillors. Um, last week, I think it was, uh, that the intention of this, uh, the changes that have been suggested. Is to actually make the, the policy more fit for purpose and of, uh, would also provide flexibility for staff. Depending on the, um, the particular, uh. Development that was occurring to ensure that there was better, um, notification for, um. Surrounding property owners, is that correct?
Uh, through the CEO, yes, councillor Green, that, that is correct, and it's consistent with, um, as I said, our neighbouring councils, we've done some benchmarking. Um, just to, just to make you aware too, that the notification catchments in the table relate, relate to development applications, not planning proposals. So we're not proposing to change planning proposal notification, given the fact that it, it's not necessarily the size of, of a planning proposal. In terms of the site itself, the scale, um, is, it needs to, we need the opportunity to be able to make the call on the, the scale of. Impact of, of a planning proposal, Morepoint's a good example where we, we went out to fifty thousand properties across the CBD. If we were to apply a, a, a catchment, uh, as per the, the, the current table in here for development applications. We, we wouldn't have that, uh, we were roomed about to do that, but in terms of development applications, yes, this, this is, this is consistent with what we talked about at the, uh. Governance committee last week.
Wasn't that, um, the governance committee, we didn't have a quorum last week? It's in the minutes.
Yeah, technically with no quorum, there was no meeting, so yes.
Thank you, through the chair, I, I think the environment which it was discussed was the councillor briefing.
Correct.
Which, which, uh, was adjacent to the governance meeting.
Councillor McNaul?
Yeah, I have a foreshadowed motion, Mr Mayor, um, which is just as per the book. And I understand this comes back to us after public exhibition.
Yep. I think that would be more of an amendment. I mean, yeah, do you have a seconder? Seconding councillor Moon. Yep. Yep, councillor CEO? I just want to take the CEO's, make just a quick comment, deputy mayor?
Uh, just that any decision of council tonight must include. Public exhibition, so at the moment, the. Councillor Restevsky's motion doesn't, it will need to if it proceeds.
Deputy mayor?
My understanding of all this is that this is talking about the distances, the minimum distances. Needed to mo- notify residents or property owners. From my dealings, particularly in the rural area, we have had shortcomings in that. The distance was a thousand metres or, or whatever it was, and the point is, particularly in the rural areas. We missed out on a lot of residents that were not notified, particularly with waste recycling. Those sorts of issues, when they occurred, people were not given that information, so the, from my recollection of. The presentation that was given, the idea was that that would reduce that problem. In other words, we would reach more people and hence I thought this was a great opportunity to amend those shortcomings. That, I thought, was the whole idea of this, which irrespective the fact that we didn't have a quorum. The onus is on councillors to come to those things and get the information. If they can't come to the meeting, at least they should be able to get the, the documentation to read through it and then have an informed. Decision, I don't think it's a fair excuse to say, I wasn't there and therefore I don't know about it. I think councillors have an obligation to get that information. And in fact, I think I asked, can we tape this meeting at the time? So councillors, who, who for whatever reasons couldn't make it, and I understand that, it was during the daytime. That they could get the transcript and look at it. And that brings me to another point, I intend to later move a motion at a subsequent meeting that we. Turn those meetings to night time, so that councillors who are working during the day and have commitments can at least attend them. Otherwise, we're going to end up with that same thing where we do not have a quorum for important meetings, thank you.
Cool, any other further discussion? So I just think based on the CEO's advice, um, we need to have the. Are you councillor Restevsky, Monahan, are you happy to change your motion to include the, the points one to five and then making your point? Point six? Point two? Yep, the mover and second happy with that? Yes? We're saying that the, the wording of the original motion, there are items that we need to.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Okay, great, alright, and, uh, sorry, the foreshadow, it's, it's an amendment, it's not a foreshadowed motion, it's effectively the same. Motion, huh?
Less that additional point.
Yeah, the amendment motion, the amendment is just the orig- original recommendation, so not a foreshadowed.
Like, but doesn't, if it's an amendment, doesn't it have to be amending the current motion on the floor?
Amendment is pretty much, if the motion is similar in nature versus being something completely different, if it's completely different. If, if the content is going in a different direction, then yeah, if it's just minor changes to that motion.
Hasn't it always been the ordinary practice that if there's an amendment, the mover and the second are asked if the. The amendment's to be incorporated, if the amendment's not to be incorporated, I mean, the amendment gets voted against, shouldn't we vote on the amendment first before we vote on the motion?
Correct, the amendment goes first.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I was just trying to clarify what the.
Yeah, yeah, where foreshadowed would come after the original motion. Um. Alright, um, any, any further discussion on this matter?
I just need to know for clear, be clear, which one is being put first?
So, um, we'll have the amendment, if councillor McNaul or Moon wants to speak for their, for the amendment?
Yeah, just briefly, um, Mr Mayor, I would just wanted to thank staff for the extensive, um, work they've done on this and that the, um. Uh, briefing sessions that we've had, so that we've had our, um, possibilities to, to tease out this, um. Important document and I, um, commend them for their work on that, thank you.
Okay.
Be- before we, before we continue. The amendment is the substantial, like, it, it's, it's a substantial motion, if we pass the amendment. We're passing the motion.
No, the, the, the amendment, then, if the amendment is passed, the, that becomes the motion.
Okay, isn't that the foreshadow, isn't that what the foreshadowed provisions are?
No, foreshadow if a motion loses, then it's foreshadowed that you're moving a different motion. So for example, in this situation, if it was a foreshadow that we don't put on exhibition or we do something significantly different. Then there would be now, it's, that's not amending, because it's not amending something, uh, and then is. In context about slightly adjusting it. in context about slightly adjusting it versus foreshadowed as something significantly different. So that's the threshold.
Isn't the amendment significantly different? Uh, that that that's what I'm just trying to wrap my mind.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, that that question, I don't, I don't, I don't see it that way, it's
Because the 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 motion that's currently before the council is to um send the document back out to public exhibition, whereas the amendment is to adopt it now. Or that, isn't that significantly? What what is the, what was the difference?
The difference is, if you go to
Distances and point two of the motion aim second, whereas my motion doesn't have that change in distances. They're both going out to public exhibition.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's not come back to us.
Oh, okay.
Cool. Okay, uh, so we'll deal with the amendment first. Um. All those in favour, uh, please raise your hands. Against, I declare the amendment carried, the amendment now becomes the motion. All those in favour of the motion, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried. Next item is plan zero three, um, post, uh, page sixty nine, tab three with a recommendation on page seventy.
Happy to move that way, Mister Mayor.
Post heritage report, planning proposal, heritage listing for seventeen weeks, proclaim month, oh my, moved councillor McNaught, seconded deputy mayor. Any discussion? I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Against, declare it carried. Next item is plan zero four, amendment to the, uh, page seventy four, tab four, recommendation on page seventy five. Amendment to the state environmental planning policy precinct West City Parkland, two hundred and five Adams Road, moved. Deputy Mayor, seconded. Councillor Amun. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Against, I declare it carried. Next item is com uh zero one, page eighty seven, tab five, recommendation of page eighty seven. Uh, report back to council dissolution of Liverpool Access Committee member consultation.
Happy to move as per the book?
Moved councillor Hart, recommendation. Do you have a seconder?
I've got a question before you vote.
Councillor A J. Councillor Hart would like to speak for your motion? No?
Uh, no, I'm happy with the recommendation.
Councillor Sevsky, a question?
Uh, the, on the first page of, uh, sorry, page eighty eight, there was some uh feedback from the committee members and there was three points uh raised. If you have a look at page eighty eight, which goes to eighty nine, um, I can't see anywhere in the report that these concerns have been addressed. Um. I I I don't know. So is, am I missing something in the report? Um.
So your specific question is, has the issues raised been considered in the reports?
Yeah, correct. The three key feedback from the committee members included, there's three points there. But there's no, nothing addressing these uh concerns from these committee members.
Thank you for the question, councillor. Through this chair, I'll just refer the question to um the director, community and lifestyle.
Uh, thank you. Through the CEO, yes, um, that's correct. They were raised, um, and you're right, we didn't um note that they were um agreeable as we talked through them. Um, we just made a general statement to say that they did agree that it was um um, they were happy with the the with with the responses that we provided. So um uh, we've had representation from two of the committees uh entered since then.
Any further discussion? Deputy Mayor?
Yes, um, I was at that meeting and we did discuss the uh, the the committee members' concerns. And then those committee members were assured that council had the necessary uh information in place and the uh the concerns were addressed. And the people I spoke to, particularly those with the disability disadvantage, they were quite happy with what council was doing. So I'm in favour of it.
Councillor Kine?
Yeah, Mister Mayor, just a question about establishes a disability c- consultation registry. Is any apart from that inferring that somebody can come to council, raise a query, wh- what does that actually involve? What what's the, what's the intention behind that? Is it a register of queries that just get attended to? Um, in terms of, you know, I've got this issue with this particular road, in terms of access. Um, how do I ventilate that? Um. Consult, what do they just discuss? Where where does it take us? I I just don't want it to be a a blur for the people who are wanting to access services, raise questions. Perhaps it's a question for the relevant director.
Yeah, no, good question. I'll refer that to the CEO.
Uh, thank you. So it 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 is described, so through the use of this register, council will build on its existing network of key disability stakeholders. And they can be called upon on a needs basis to give critical insight into access and inclusion matters in Liverpool. So we hold the register and we flex and make it agile to the, to the needs as we see um it uh advancing existing disability networks. So I think the key thing for council is we we have the register. And then where a D S A P T or uh another disability issue comes along, we seek those stakeholders to be included in that specific outcome.
That that just answered my question that I was thinking, will people or organisations who are uh on this register, will they automatically be consulted in relation to concerns that they might have?
Yes, through the chair, e- even better. So the the register exists and will be expanded. So it'll actually be a a tool that council officers can use to to seek this kind of information bespoke to the the situation or circumstance we find ourselves in.
Councillor Kine?
Yeah, would the mover and second be content with a point three that perhaps just because this is the first time this is occurring, particularly in our term of council, noting that we've been here for about ten months, let a report come back in three months um as to any feedback that comes back from these stakeholders to determine the implementation of the new consultation register, just to determine if it's fit for purpose um and it's meeting the needs of the people that it's intended to meet.
The mover and second are happy with that?
I think it's an excellent idea. I'm more than happy for that to be added.
Yep, sorry, CEO?
So thank, thank you through the chair. It it is described that the disability consultation register will be conducted a a review of it will be conducted after one year to understand its approach has been effective and any alternate engagement mechanism, but we're certainly happy with a shorter period of three months suitable to counsel.
Cool. Any other further discussion? I just want to make a slight point, maybe a gripe. It was um something that's been raised with me from the community recently and it's I'm just, I'm a bit disappointed, I'm not having a go at the committee, but as we never picked this up. Um, a lot of elderly people are saying it's, they're finding it difficult to get to the new library. Um, the buses aren't coming here, um, there's no real pick up and pick up and drop off zone. Council's put a no stopping uh part and then uh down there and they've just closed it off. So I just think it's um I guess they're the things that the committee really you'd want to hope they would have, would have covered and got the head around. Um. But I just hope that we can make sure that we're getting that lens over things so we can we don't have to wait for our community to say, oh, I haven't gone to the library in months because of these sorts of things. Um. Uh, well, hopefully we can pick up these in a preventive uh preemptive fashion. So I said it was more of a gripe than anything, you know, but we'll bring those up later on in discussion. If there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare it carried. Next item is uh com zero two, page ninety one, tab six, recommendation on page ninety one. Council grants donations and sponsorship report.
Happy to move as per the book.
Move councillor Monahan, seconded. Councillor Amun, any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour? Against, I declare it carried. Next item is com zero three, page ninety seven, tab seven, with recommendation on page ninety seven, the review of the Aboriginal Consultative Community Structure and Charter. Do we have a motion? Councillor Green?
As per the book? Yes, please.
I'm happy to second.
Seconded councillor. Yeah, uh. Damn. Councillor Monahan, is there any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Against, declare it carried. Uh, next item is com zero four, page one hundred and thirteen, tab eight, recommendation on page one thirteen, policy review, council and staff direction policy, councillor McNaught.
Um, like to move that we defer this item, please.
Yeah, you have a seconder, seconded deputy mayor. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Against, declare it carried. Next item is corp zero one, oh no, we've done that one. Uh, next item is corp zero two, uh, page one forty one, tab ten, recommendation on page one forty one. Delegation to the CEO. Councillor McNaught. Move the recommendation, seconded deputy mayor. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Against, I declare it carried. Next item is corp zero three, uh, page one hundred and forty eight, tab eleven, re- recommendation on page one forty eight, code of conduct complaints.
I'd like to uh speak on this motion.
Yeah, do we have a mover?
Happy to move it.
Move councillor Monahan, is there a seconder? Seconded councillor Kineb. Any discussion?
Yes, um. It's great timing that this has come up because there was an article in the Daily Telegraph on the fourteenth of June where the state government is cracking down on trivial and vivacious code of conduct complaints. That's the headline, it's not my words. And how they have been weaponised. Now, the article mentioned Dubbo as the worst offending council. It had seventy seven complaints for a cost of four hundred and ten thousand over five years. Now, looking at this report, Liverpool is at a hundred and fifteen at a cost of three hundred and twenty thousand and hasn't been twelve months. Now, it's getting out of control and and definitely needs to stop. Because at the rate we are going, we're probably heading to one point six million dollars during this council term. And the ratepayers don't want to see their money being utilised for for these kind of things when we've just given them a six percent rate increase. Um, they want, as per the um submissions, they want money spent on parks and roads, not code of conduct complaints. Now, three hundred and twenty thousand that's been spent so far according to this report could have been used to fund that vital project recommended by the two one six eight Children's Parliament, which I moved last month to endorse and fund, but we couldn't have the funding in place. Now, in my opinion, councillors need to demonstrate a greater resolve and integrity rather than resorting to unconstructive criticism or reporting actions inappropriately. Such behaviour undermines
Count, point of order has been called councillor Hart.
Is councillor Restevsky questioning the his fellow councillor's integrity?
Uh, yes councillor, that's upheld. Ple- uh, please do not bring councillors integrity in into um into question.
No problem. Um, I I'd like to give two examples on how this costs can come down. I had the CEO reach out to me just recently about a post that was on my Facebook. And he asked me to remove it. Now, I was glad to remove it and we resolved it there and then, saving the community fifteen grand. There was another incident, I had the director Shane Mallard emailing me about rectifying a post on my Facebook page, which I was glad to rectify. We did it there and then, another fifteen thousand dollar savings. Now, this is great and I have to commend the CEO and director Mallard in the maturity shown in trying to contain this spiralling expenditure on these code of conducts. Now, I've even had one of the councillors complain about me holding a community forum for constituents. Is uh is this a code of conduct? I I don't know what's going on anymore, but it's become this functional because of this constant goings on, reviewing people's Facebook page. The most efficient way that, in my opinion, to meet constituents is via one meeting. I can't have fifty meetings individually. But anyway, the new social media policy was supposed to contain these code of conducts. Now, without giving the public an opportunity to have their say, it's actually been a mistake and code of conducts have actually increased. I'll give you another example. I was on the Pulse radio show last week for the first time. Um. Someone's decided to, in the media department, I don't know who, transcribe my interview when I've been on that show plenty of times. Now, at the start of the show, I said that I'm here as a ratepayer, not as a councillor. And from what I've been told, that transcription has breached copyright laws, which I've already told council about. And there is an investigation going on from the radio regarding this.
Uh, Mister Mayor, I don't know how this has got anything to do with the um report that's in front of us.
It does.
Yeah, uh, thank you.
It does have everything to do with it because there is a code of conduct regarding the Pulse.
That, that, sorry, um, that's, sorry, I have to uphold that. And councillor Restevsky, this is a matter regarding a budgetary matter regarding the code of, this is not an opportunity to discuss code of conducts as they have been lodged. Um, and a a, I refer you to the code of conduct which stipulates about uh accusations regarding code of conducts, um, and that in itself is potential uh breach. So if you can keep your questions relating to the subject matter at hand.
Sure, no problem. Um, what I was curious about, and I I have raised this with council, um, why wasn't the transcription of the radio interview when the CEO was on there last week and I believe
Sorry, councillor Restevsky.
Okay, fine, okay, that's fine.
This is a matter, can you please?
I will go on to the most important part. I don't know if councillor has seen this, but I I found this quite interesting. Councillor Circular, free speech in local government, released by the Office of Local Government, third of June, twenty twenty five. Now, it talks about free speech guidelines which needs to be considered by conduct reviewers when dealing with code of conduct matters that have been referred to them. Freedom of political communication under the Australian Constitution and how free speech is regulated, is protected. The ability to engage freely with the community is central to a councillor's role as an elected representative prescribed under his act. The relevant provision of the mode of, mode of model code of conduct that it recognises the importance of public comment by councillors and how they should be applied by councils to ensure they do not inhibit free speech.
Sorry, councillor, there's been a code of, code of, there's been a point of order. What's your code of order, point of math, councillor Hart?
I, if if councillor Restevsky wants to make any amendments to the code of conduct, he can do so by moving a motion. I I don't think providing commentary on freedom of speech has got anything to do with this report once again.
It has everything.
It's, how is it not directly relevant? It's about, it's about code of conduct, it's about the regulation of
Sorry, yeah, thank you councillor, I'll, I, thank you councillor Monahan.
It's directly relevant.
Uh, it's my ruling, my my uh job to make a ruling on the uh, on the point of order. Um, it can, it it is upheld because this is a, this is a discussion regarding the financial impacts uh regarding code of conducts. Where if you want to amend the code of conduct procedures, processes that are clearly stipulated by the Office of Local Government, that is a completely different discussion. Talking about uh uh the free speech, once again, it's another discussion whilst, uh, and if you want to move that way, feel free to put a motion accordingly. Um, this is not a thing, a place to appoint uh and an opportunity to air or respond uh to code of conducts because ultimately there is a hundred, whatever the number is in there, and whatever they are, whoever they're for, whoever they're against, that's, we don't know what they're for. So let's keep it at that. So councillor Restevsky, you've now had, is there anything else you'd like to point out quickly? Um, relating to this particular report?
I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Councillor McNaught? Oh, sorry, I've got a councillor Kineb next.
I just have some questions. Um. This is the uh second time we've been furnished with a report like this and I thank staff for it, but there's not a lot of detail in the report and I would, I'm happy for this to be taken on notice, I don't expect it to be answered now. But I'd like a little bit more detail, um, anonymised. I I don't want to um breach any privacy, but I'd like to know the breakdown of, um of who the codes of conduct generally, or who they relate to. I don't want the people identified, just columns on a chart. And um who is actually putting forward those um codes of conduct, be that councillors or staff.
Councillor McNaught, can I, um, and all councillors, can I recommend that uh people tread very carefully on this matter? Um, code of conducts should not be weaponised in the, in any potential fashion. Um, and I, can I recommend that maybe questions be brought up directly with the CEO and if they want them to be circulated, then so be it, let it be circulated. But I think that just needs to be, we need to be trading very carefully with respect.
Happy to follow up with an email.
Yes, thank you, councillor. I understand the intent of your question, unfortunately. Um, a- any, any further detail would may, may compromise an ongoing uh inquiry, investigation, et cetera, into the code of conduct itself. Uh, by by giving more detail um in in a report, e- even if it was anonymous, um, there there's in- inferred inferences and biases around the data. I will, I will say in relation to the report that um uh, on the twenty eighth of February, I wrote to the O L G about on the 28th of February, I wrote to the OLG about this very matter and sought their advice under section 440H in relation to what they could do for us. And, um, uh, we did not hear back from the OLG, uh, for eight weeks, at which stage met with general counsel, we approached them again, uh, uh, only to get a similar response and a refusal to, uh, investigate our code of conduct trend, and as councillor Rostewski quite rightly, um, um, indicated, the, uh, it is, uh, without precedent now, the numbers, as, as against the stated benchmarks against other councils. Um, the OLG unfortunately refused us again. Um, and that was where our number was, was a similar amount to the number described in the previous council, I think you said 70 councillor. Uh, when it got, when it topped 100, I wrote to the OLG again, and I've had nothing back from the OLG in relation to assistance, uh, with this part of, uh, my job. I would say that it's taking an inordinate amount of CEO's time, uh, because every code of conduct must go through the CEO. And then the governance team, uh, are stretched in capacity in relation to managing, uh, the code of conduct complaints. And I look forward to the advice of the OLG and the minister himself in relation to, uh, measures to improve, uh, code of conduct practices.
Um, if I could just ask about, um, the instances where you've contacted the Office of Local Government, um, when was the, uh, first time you contacted the Office of Local Government about the number of code of conduct complaints relating to Liverpool council?
Yeah, through the chair, the 28th of February 2025 was the first time I formally wrote to them about it. Um, because we didn't hear back for nearly three months, um, March, April, May, we, we then made, um, contact with the OLG again, referring them back to our original challenge, uh, and com- and, um, and inquiry. And then the, the general counsel and I met with two representatives of OLG via Teams. Uh, and we went through the process where they, uh, described, um, their rationale not to involve themselves in what they thought was local council matters for a political motive. And they refused us under 440H, uh, to do a similar, um, a similar, uh, process as they did in Snowy Monaro.
Was a, a written response received from the Office of Local Government?
Uh, yes, it was.
And a further letter was written, uh, by, uh, council to the Office of Local Government?
Yes, two, two letters via, well, one by, well, a response by the general counsel and then another email last week.
Uh, and the Office of Local Government met with council in relation to the complaints raised in those letters?
We've had one meeting via Teams, yes.
Yes, um, and they raised, um, concerns about it being, uh, used as a, as a political, what, what were your words?
My words were similar to, um, we, uh, uh, are not, uh, I might refer to the general councillors, they have a better description of this, um, uh, but the words-
Yeah, I'm sorry, once again, um, uh, to CEO and councillors, I think we, we need to be treading very carefully with regards to this and be mindful of whether, um, this matter, one, should be discussed on the floor of council, two, and if it does, I, I, based on the nature of the question, I believe it should be going into a, um, a, a closed session, um. Uh, just, uh, I think there's, code of con- there's a clear code of conduct process. So just before we go to the general council, it's the councillor Kineb, I, I'd called him earlier.
Yes, thank you, I just got, um, a question in respect of table two on page 149, uh, through the chair, perhaps to the, to the CEO. The total number received, um, in the 2024-2025 financial year is 115. Am I correct in inferring that the complaints that were declined were done by yourself as the CEO? As opposed to the ones withdrawn? Because I understand that there's, there's a couple there, so the ones declined, have they been declined by the CEO? That's my first question.
Okay, so the, the answer is they go to a code of conduct assessor-
Yep.
Who provides advice in relation to the declining or the withdrawing.
Okay, and that's, so when they, when you say, when you say complaints declined or withdrawn, that can be either declined by the assessor or withdrawn by the lodge, whoever's lodged the, the complaint, correct?
Correct.
And then, no action following preliminary assessment, that, does that mean that that's gone to the second phase? And then what's occurred is that no action's been determined to be taken, um, following a preliminary assessment or referral to the OLG? So that, is that, that the assessor has determined that those five, in addition to the seven, would not go to the next stage?
Yes, so, so through the chair, um, you, you were correct originally councillor in understanding that the seven-
Yep.
Were either withdrawn-
Yep.
Or declined by the CEO at the initial phase.
Initial phase.
Then, then you have five that had no action following either preliminary assessment or referral to the OLG.
And the preliminary assessment is done by the assessor internally?
No, by an external.
By an external assessor. And then the three that complaints dealt with by other action?
Um, yeah, so that is where, um, it's determined that rather than proceed through an investigatory process, that some other action is taken, for example, it could be a conversation with the subject matter of the complaint, it could be some education, it could be a, a range of things which are nominated in the procedure.
Wonderful, and the nine that initial assessment by the governance team, uh, does that mean that when they're reviewed by the governance team, at that point they're struck out?
Uh, no, um, so the, the, the process under the code of conduct procedures is effectively an initial phase where the CEO considers the matter.
Hmm.
Uh, that is done on advice from the governance team, so that initial assessment is where they've come in, um, they've been accepted, we're looking at it to give advice to the CEO. The ones that are at preliminary assessment are with an external conduct reviewer.
Yep.
So they've made it past the CEO out to-
Yep.
Have a further consideration, and the ones that are at investigation stage-
Yes.
Are matters where they've been the subject of preliminary assessment.
Yep, and they've passed it.
The conduct reviewer has recommended investigation and they are now being investigated.
So, if I was to total, just for completeness, 27, 9, 3, 5 and 7, a total of 51, does that mean that at some stage during the process, that 51 complaints have been struck out before going to an external investigator?
No.
What does that mean then?
So, what, what you will find is, um, 12, 12, sorry, seven haven't made it to an, an extern- uh, an external reviewer?
Yep.
Um, five have made it to an external reviewer but gone no further?
Yep.
Um, three have been dealt with by some alternative means, so they, they probably could go with the seven in a way, there's no, no breach proved.
Makes sense.
And, um, the remaining nine plus 27 plus 64 are all making their way through the system. So they are unresolved matters.
Unresolved matters.
Um, the 27 could end up in external investigation or they could end up in resolution by other means. Um, so tho- those are making their way through the system.
I hear you, so those, those categories of nine and seven are still making their way through the system?
The, the nine, the 27 and the 64 are still working.
Okay, and each one, am I correct in understanding, does each one cost the exact same to assess no matter, no matter where it reaches? Or does it obviously cost more the longer it progresses through the chain?
Yes, it would take longer the, the longer it progresses through the chain. Uh, we do attempt to deal with these as efficiently as we can, so, um, where, where a number are received at the same time, we will try and group them together and deal with them, um, together.
Thank you, general counsel.
Sorry, and just to clarify, so the, the seven and the five and the three, those, um, uh, those 15 haven't necessarily cost external funds, because they would be dealt with, they were dealt with just about internally, except for the three?
The five that went to a, an external assessor for preliminary assessment would cost ex, would, would cost actual money.
Yeah.
Uh, they all would involve staff time. I think what you can say about the three, five and seven at the bottom is they're effectively concluded matters. So of the 115, you have 15 at the bottom which have, are finished effectively.
Just finally, question through the chair to the general counsel, wha- what would be the estimated cost of those 15, just approximately? It's hard to, yeah, no, look, I, I thought that may be the case, but I just thought I'd ask, thank you.
Sorry, there was another question, which, uh, I don't know if you wanted me to answer that. So there was a sequence that the CEO was explaining, it, it's not a hundred percent perfect. I'm sorry to say in terms of the, you know, the order in which things happened. I think we would be quite limited in what we could disclose about some of that correspondence because of the detail involved in it.
Councillor Monahan?
Um, so i- it's fair to say councils contacted the Office of Local Government twice. Uh, the Office of Local Government, um, has at least responded on one occasion, uh, in the form of writing, and then has met with council, uh, via Teams to discuss the problem. Um, is that a cor- a fair assessment of the situation so far?
Yes.
Broadly. Um, and the Office of Local Government, um, declined to intervene, is that correct?
I'm just going to take the advice of the general counsel and just, uh, err there in the side of not responding to the detail of the letter.
Um, earlier, you said that they refused, um, is that they refused to, uh, intervene? Or refuse to respond, or I'm not asking for the content of the letter, just whether or not the, the Office of Local Government is going to take action?
Colloquially, they left it back with council's hands.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, I will put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare it carried, um, so just be mindful of time, I'll call a slight recess to 7:50pm, thank you everyone.
Meant it.
May 25, move Deputy Mayor, Secretary of Council Hart, any discussion?
Thank you. We've requested a property portfolio report that is accompanied by this investment report. Can we make sure that's in the next investment report?
I have a nod from the Director of Corporate Support.
Thank you.
Can we just have that noted in the minutes as well, please? Yep. Just want to note it in the minutes that we, council previously resolved to receive a report on the property portfolio and that we receive that next month, please. Great. Alright, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it carried. Alright, so as council is aware, there was a printing issue. So I'll deal with this in order, but if we need to, we'll move into confidential. The next one is Corp 05, which has been moved into the confidential booklet.
I'm happy to move the motion as per the book.
Yep. Moved, councillor McNair, second to Deputy Mayor, is any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it carried. Next item is Corp 06, page 169, tab 14, recommendation number 65, councillor McNair.
I'd like to move to defer this to a governance committee, please.
Yep. Do you have a seconder? Secretary of Councillor AJ? Right. Any discussion?
Yes, just internal voting for it, but given that we've got to move on a seconder, I have a couple of questions. To the relevant director, what's the basis upon which these new policies have been created?
Obviously I'll refer the question to the Director, Corporate Support.
Thank you, councillor, for the question, through the CEO. Thank you, councillor, for the question. Basically, there are a number of documents that local governments use, obviously, in managing the, the, all processes of recruitment management oversight, termination, et cetera, of the CEO. And they include OLG guidelines, there are obviously, there's obviously legislation regarding the Act and the regulation. There's a local government contract for senior officers for the, for the CEO. But what this policy and procedures does is, I guess, combine all of that in a internal policy and procedures. And it also adds a timeline of processes. So it, it brings it into, we, we can control it more. It's all centralised, it's all put in, in order. So that when you read it, you go through it, you're talking about the recruitment, you get all the, all of that information about the recruitment of the CEO, and then the appointment of the CEO, and then management of the CEO, and, and then the performance review of the CEO, right through to, to the termination of the CEO. So where these, where these are covered in various documents, as I said, they are now centralised in a policy and two procedures.
So these are, again, to the relevant director through the CEO, these are a range of publicly available documents that have been available for a significant period of time, is that correct? You mentioned policies set out by the Office of Local Government, the department and the Act. If all of that's been around for such a long time, why has it taken council so long to develop this policy?
Sorry, microphone, please.
I can't answer that question, councillor, other than to say that we've recently gone through the process of, of recruitment of the CEO. So it was an appropriate time to provide what's been provided to you now.
On that basis, it's, it's correct to say that we've, council's recently gone through the process of selecting a CEO in the last couple of years on, on a number of occasions, isn't that correct?
On another occasion, in my terms.
And at that stage, it wasn't contemplated by the council to create and or implement this policy, is that correct?
That's obviously the case, councillor.
Can I, whilst I have no issues with it being deferred, because I think that's a good thing to give councillor, councillors time to consider it, but from our preliminary approval result, I think it's a fantastic idea that there's a policy like this in place because it just beggars belief why there wasn't one at all, and this is a creation of a policy. So, i- is it, am I correct in assuming that there has never been a policy that this council's had that centers around the appointment, oversight, performance and separation, of a CEO?
From my, from my time on council, no, I'm sure, I don't think Deputy Mayor, you've, you're the elder statesman here, is saying no. What exists is, and we've talked about this previously, there's a, there's a OLG handbook, right, which talks about the, exactly that, the procedures for recruitment, appointment and performance management of, of the CEO. So when you read that document, it sets out guidelines, but it's actually not, it doesn't actually technically have any standing because it's not, not an adopted policy of council. So whilst it was being referred to, right, it didn't actually have any official weight because council had never adopted that, it's only just recommendations of how you should do things, I guess. So this, from a governance point of view now, formalizes it, makes it clear, and I think it's a, I think it's a positive thing.
I just have a question, Mr.
Sorry, but I would have thought that council would have had to abide by those OLG guidelines irrespective.
No, when you, when you read it, it's, provides, it just, once again, it's just a guide. So for example, when we established the panel recently, whilst we established it twice, neither one of those was in line with OLG guidelines, they were all above and beyond. So that's the sort of, they're, they're little things like that. What I'm more interested in is the sort of day-to-day sort of stuff that happens, you know? I, if I'm provided with, you know, the CEO has a credit card, I'm provided with, I'm, I'm supposed to sign off on it, so under what policy do I sign this off? There's nothing that actually states that I sign it off. And that's, you know, that's, yeah, that's got to be clarified, I guess, that's what this does. Councillor Hart?
So are we aware of any other councils that have a, a similar policy or suite of policies when it comes to the CEO?
Thank you for the question, through the Chair, Director of Corporate Support.
None that I'm aware of, councillor.
So you could say that this is, we're going above and beyond and it's, it's out of the ordinary that we're doing this, but we're doing it for the best level of governance?
Is it the case, councillor? Yes.
What other councils do you have? Sorry, I'll get you in a moment, councillor Green, I just noticed you saying you. What other councils do have is, we just have delegations to the CEO, a lot of them have delegations to the mayor with regards to these items. You can find those for other councils, I know Sydney City has one and I think Parramatta as well. Yeah. Councillor Green?
Just a comment, really. My understa- with my understanding, this suite of, of policies very much reflects the most recent CEO recruitment that we have embarked upon. And that, that particular process was robust, it was, I mean, look, the, I, one that I had been involved in, that one was, was a much more transparent and accountable. And while I understand some people may not have had an opportunity to read through them or be, or discuss them before, happy to defer, but I'm also really happy to see that, that the, the policy is, lays out very clearly what the processes should be and the people that should be involved in terms of probity and independent share.
Mr Mayor, I have, I have a question, just on the back of the comment that councillor Green's made. If I could ask councillor Green, would you say that the process that we embarked upon in this term was more robust than the process that was embarked upon in the previous term?
In, only based on my experience, this last experience was certainly more robust and accountable. And I was pleased to see that they've been, that, that, that the, the whole process from beginning to to end has been presented in a suite of, of, of policies that reflect that, that experience and process, but also incorporate the important aspects of the OLG guidelines as well.
Yeah, and I think councillor Monahan, the main difference between this time and then last time is there was an external property advisor every step of the way, and as you said, so, yeah, that was.
And the independent chair, which made a big difference, I think, to, to how the, the process progressed and, you know, I think that's what made it a far better process.
And just one follow-up question through the mayor to councillor Green. Would you think that if these policies were in place at the time of your, of the previous term, when the previous CEO was appointed, that that process would have been more robust, more transparent and have more accountability?
I think I would answer that question as to, in each process you go through, you learn from it, and I think that collectively, we learnt that the last process
I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it carried. Next item is Corp 06, page 169, tab 14, documentation 165, councillor McNaul.
I'd like to move to defer this to a governance committee, please.
Yep, do you have a seconder? Seconded councillor AJ. Any discussion?
Um, yes, just internal voting for it, um, but given that we've got a mover and a seconder, I have a couple of questions, um, to the relevant director, what's the basis upon which these new policies have been created?
Obviously, I'll refer the question to the director, corporate support.
Uh, thank you councillor for the question, to the CEO, thank you councillor for the question. Um, basically, there are a number of documents that our local governments use, obviously, uh, in managing the, uh, the, well, processes of recruitment management oversight termination, et cetera, of the CEO. Um, and they include, you know, OLG guidelines, there are obviously, there's obviously legislation regarding the act and the regulation. Uh, there's a local government contract for senior officers for the, for the CEO. But what this policy and procedures does is, I guess, combine all of that in a internal policy and procedures. Uh, and it also adds, um, uh, a timeline of processes, so it, it brings it into, uh, we, we can control it more, it's all centralised, it's all put in, in order. Uh, so that when you read it, you go through it, you're talking about the recruitment, you get all the, all of that information about the recruitment of the CEO, and then the appointment of the CEO, and then management of the CEO, and, and then the performance review of the CEO, right through to, to the termination of the CEO. So where these, where these are covered in various documents, as I said, they are now centralised in a policy and two procedures.
Uh, so these are, um, again, to the relevant director through the CEO, these are a range of publicly available documents that have been available for a significant period of time, is that correct? Um, you mentioned policies set out by the office of local government, the department and the act. Um, if all of that's been around for such a long time, why has it taken council so long to develop this policy?
Sorry, microphone, please.
I can't answer that question councillor, other than to say that, um, we've recently gone through the process of, of recruitment of a CEO. So it was an appropriate time to, um, to provide what's been provided to you now.
Um, on that basis, it's, it's correct to say that we've councils recently, uh, gone through the process of selecting a CEO in the last couple of years, on, on a number of occasions, isn't that correct?
On another occasion, in my terms.
Um, and at that stage, it wasn't contemplated by the council to create and or implement this policy, is that correct?
That's obviously the case councillor.
Uh, can I, uh, whilst I have no issues with it being deferred, because I think that's a good thing to give councillor, councillors time to consider it, but from our preliminary approval result, I think it's a fantastic idea that there's a policy like this in place, because it just beggars belief why there wasn't one at all, and this is a creation of a policy. So, i- is it, am I correct in assuming that there has never been a policy that this council's had, that centers around the appointment, oversight, performance and separation of a CEO?
From my, from my time on council, no, I'm sure, I don't think deputy mayor, you've, uh, you're the elder statesman here, um, he's saying no. Um, what exists is, uh, and we've talked about this, uh, previously, there's a, there's a, uh, OLG handbook, right? Which talks about the, exactly that, the, um, um, procedures for recruitment, appointment and performance management of, of the CEO. So when you read that document, it sets out guidelines, but it's actually not, it doesn't actually technically have any standing, because it's not, not an adopted policy of council. So whilst it was being referred to, you know, it didn't actually have any official weight, because council had never adopted that, it's only just recommendations of how you should do things, I guess, so this from a governance point of view now formalizes it, makes it clear. Uh, and I think it's a, I think it's a positive thing.
I just have a question, Mr.
Sorry, um, but I would have thought that council would have had to abide by those OLG guidelines irrespective.
No, when you, when you read it, it's, provides, it just, once again, it's just a guide. So for example, when we established the panel recently, on whilst we established it twice, neither one of those was in line with OLG guidelines. They were all above and beyond, so that's the sort of, they're, they're little things like that. What I'm more interested in is the sort of day-to-day sort of stuff that happens, you know? I, if I'm provided with, you know, in, uh, uh, the CEO has a credit card, I'm provided with, I'm, I'm supposed to sign off on it, I'm saying, well, under what policy do I sign this off? There's nothing that actually states that I sign it off, and that's, you know, that's, yeah, that's got to be clarified, I guess, so this does. Councillor Hart?
Uh, so, um, are we aware of any other councils that have a, um, a, a similar policy? Or suite of policies when it comes to the CEO?
Thank you for the question, through the chair, director of corporate support.
None that I'm aware of councillor.
So you could say that this is, we're going above and beyond and, um, it's, it's out of the ordinary that we're doing this, but we're doing it for the best level of governance.
Is it the case councillor, yes?
What other councils do you have, sorry, I'll get you in a moment councillor Green, um, just noticed you saying you, um, what other councils do have is, we just have delegations to the CEO, a lot of them have delegations to the mayor with regards to these items. Um, and you can find those for other councils, I know Sydney City has one and I think Parramatta as well, yeah, councillor Green?
Uh, just a comment, uh, really, uh, my understa- with my understanding, uh, this suite of, of policies very much reflects the most recent, um, CEO recruitment that we have, uh, embarked upon. And, um, tha- that particular process was robust, um, it was, uh, I, well, the, I, one that I had been involved in, that one was, was a much more transparent and accountable. And, um, while I understand some people may not have had an opportunity to read through them or be, or discuss them before, happy to defer, but I'm also really happy to see that, um, that the, the policy is, uh, lays out very clearly what the processes should be and the people that should be involved in terms of probity and independent share.
Um, Mr Mayor, I have, I have a question, um, for, just on the back of the comment that councillor Green's made. If I could ask councillor Green, uh, would you say that the process that we embarked upon, uh, in this term, uh, was more robust than the process that was embarked upon, uh, in the previous term?
In, I mean, only based on my experience, uh, this last experience, uh, was certainly more robust and accountable. And, um, I was pleased to see that they've been, that, 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 the, the whole process from beginning to, to end has been presented in a suite of, of, uh, of policies that reflect that, that experience and process, but also incorporate the important aspects of the OLG guidelines as well.
Yeah, and I think councillor Monahan, the main difference between this time and then last time is there was an external property advisor, uh, every step of the way, and as you say, so, yeah, that was.
And the independent chair, which made a big difference, I think, to, to how the, the, the process, um, progressed. And, um, you know, I, I think that's what made it a, a far better process.
Um, and just one, uh, follow-up question, uh, through the mayor to, um, councillor Green. Um, would you think that if, uh, these policies were in place, uh, at the time, uh, of your, uh, of the previous term, when the previous CEO was appointed, that that process would have been, uh, more robust, uh, more transparent and have more accountability?
Uh, I think I would answer that question as to, in each process you go through, you learn from it. And I think that collectively, um, we learnt that the last process was a much better process, for a whole range of reasons, and therefore is one that, um, would be helpful to, to adopt. Um, I understand why people want to defer it and happy to do that, but just making a comment that, um, based on the experience that we had and the process, that, uh, it would be an excellent, uh, excellent suite of policies to go forward.
Any, councillor AJ?
Yeah, so I, I believe that a lot of councillors might have questions or contributions, so if we go to the governance meeting, we can be free to talk and make it clear how the policy will look like, so if we can vote and then discuss at the governance meeting.
All right, if that being said, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against, I declare it carried. Next item, it's back once again, one of, one of the second other confidential item that was, um, put in our books. Corp 07, um, page 202, pay, pay, tab 15, recommendation on page 202, moved deputy mayor, seconded. Councillor Hart, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it carried. Next item. Is operations 01, page 206, tab 16, the recommendation on page 206, 206, um, mosquitoes, moved deputy mayor.
Happy to speak.
Seconded councillor Monahan.
Just got two questions on this one.
Yep. Yep, go for it, what are your questions councillor?
Um, has Sydney Water agreed to compensate, uh, the residents for, um, any expenses they've incurred?
I refer to the CEO.
Uh, through the chair, not to my knowledge.
Because in the, in this, um, report, we're, we're asking encouraging residents to make a claim for compensation. Um, on page 207, residents seeking claim for damages are encouraged to submit a claim through Sydney Water.
Uh, I might, if I can contribute, um, through the mayor to councillor Stebsky, my understanding that was the case where, um, uh, i- if a Sydney Water customer, uh, made a claim, uh, they got reimbursed for stuff like, um, fly spray and, and stuff like that.
Excellent, um, page 208, it says also council's routine maintenance program. Um, could I just scroll down a little bit on that and get some more information, what does routine mean, like, what's the frequency on this?
Thank you, through the chair, I'll refer to director of operations in relation to frequency as to routine maintenance.
Thank you through the CEO, I have the manager of environment online, and I will defer to him to answer your question specifically. Thank you, Michael.
Yeah, thanks, thanks Peter, through the, um, through the CEO, thank you for your question councillor. The frequency of maintenance is approximately every three months or so, depending on the site.
If I may councillor, Michael, can you just then provide some examples of what that maintenance might look like?
Yeah, so for example, uh, we have a number of GPTs, so the maintenance, um, for example, periodic, uh, cleaning of those GPTs, removing silt, removing rubbish, um, we also have a number of, um, gross pollution, sorry, uh, other, um, still water devices. So depending on the, on the site and the requirements and the frequency required to, to clean those sites up, um, we may, as I said, desilt, remove rubbish, uh, remove vegetation as well.
Boom, any other further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it carried. Next item is operation 02, page 210, tab 17, with the recommendation on 210, uh, fines issued by legal waste rangers.
Happy to move as per the book.
Move councillor McNaul, seconded deputy mayor, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it carried. Next, committee reports.
Move that we move them as a whole, Mr Mayor?
I've got a question on CTT 02, I'm happy with the other two, other three, sorry.
Yep, our move that we move committee one, three and four as a whole, move councillor McNaul, seconded. Deputy mayor, any discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it carried. Uh, yes, councillor, committee 03. Sorry, 02, my apologies, page 214, tab 19, recommendation on page 214, tourism CBD committee.
Yeah, on page 219, um, point 71, it says key challenges include aging infrastructure and safety concern. And then it talks about positioning Liverpool as a global city focusing on marketing. I, I think some of the things that we, we need to address, I mean, it looks great in the, the initiative, but George Street in particular, I know the business owners along that street are screaming out for some sort of investment on that street from council, but having a look at the budget, there's nothing being spent on George Street in the next twelve, twelve months. Now, um, George Street has a major problem with street lighting, and a lot of the businesses along that street will, will confirm that they are concerned with the quality of street lighting on there at night, that it inhibits people coming out and enjoying George Street, which is, a lot of them want to stay open into the evenings, so we need to be looking at these issues. And another thing that got me in the minutes was page 220, it says there hasn't been anything allocated in the budget for cleaning the outdoor dining structures in Macquarie Street as they are unkept. Now, if we want to position Liverpool as a global city, we have to get the basics right and things like that. In my opinion, and I'm sure everyone else's opinion, are unacceptable.
Yeah, thank you, through the chair, I, I might just revert to the director of ops, because we have been having continued discussions around CBD cleaning. If you've got any comment?
So through the CEO, regardless of, uh, the street, whether it be any of the streets within the CBD. So two things occur, we do undertake regular maintenance, and if you will recall, in the last two council meetings, I've provided details of our cleaning activities, uh, within the CBD and also in our parks and suburban toilet blocks, we've done that as well. Um, some other areas have been identified within the CBD recently. Uh, and as of today, uh, those works continue both in Macquarie Street, and we do have a CBD presentation team who is constantly working within the CBD. So if there are anything else that you, um, might find, and, uh, around what you've also raised councillor, if you will recall, I have responded to you on, uh, George Street as to what is occurring there and what is planned. Uh, but what is also important is the fact that there is a lot of live environment work occurring within the CBD at the moment, now, under two different grants, and the Macquarie Street, Railway Street and Scott Street works are all going to take place in the next financial year. And there is already some planning underway, uh, with changes that will occur to George Street. Uh, but you are correct, there will be no specific major work being done in George Street in the next 12 months, because we have all of these concurrent projects underway, and it's a matter of being able to manage a CBD in a fashion that is not, uh, too disruptive.
Sorry councillor Green?
Uh, just a, a question, bit of clarification, on this particular, um, issue around the dining, um, structures, outdoor dining structures, if I can recall it, and councillor McNaul might need to clarify it, I think that was related to the, um, uh, where the, uh, outdoor dining structures with the, um, the blinds, the see-through blinds that come down, and part of the problem there, I would imagine, is also linked back to the fact that, uh, we still have smoking in the mall, where, um, legislation was really clear from 2011 that, um, anywhere where there is outdoor dining or where food is served, that, uh, smoking shouldn't be occurring. So I am wondering if that's the issue that was also brought up in the context of that committee meeting as well.
I'm not sure if the, if that was brought up at the committee, I don't know who was.
No, that was, that was what the, what councillor Green's correct, that's what the outdoor dining was related to in that committee, particularly was those structures in the mall.
Well, I, I think, um, both the, of these matters are, um, are very, uh, relevant to be discussed. Uh, uh, previously, we did have a building on New City Committee, which looked at the strategy with regards to our city and what we were doing and what should happen. Um, I really do think we need to be going to something like that, but with probably a bit more of a broader, uh, view. Uh, uh, because once again, you know, George Street, we have a resolution about George Street, turning into Little India, turning to Saris Street, and we did say, let's do a whole bunch of works there, but we have, we have, there seems to be nothing past that. Um, so I think, uh, it's something for councils, maybe we can bring up, um, um, at another meeting in, in the future where we can discuss these things, because, yeah, we don't want, uh, people, uh, our community first and foremost, uh, coming, feeling like if the city is not welcoming or inviting, or doesn't feel, feel clean, but, and also has infrastructure that is run down, and definitely, um, I think George Street has like one tree on it from what I can tell, so, um, there are definitely opportunities, and that's only going to get, it's going to look worse once every other street in Liverpool gets done up with the Western Invest money and that one is just sitting there, uh, doing nothing, so, yeah. Maybe we can do a little bit of a sculpt enhancement and stretch the, uh, stretch the work down a little bit on, uh, a little bit of block on, uh, on, 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 on George Street, so I think that's the, the best way we could do with it going forward.
And just good, Mr Mayor, can we also add into that, um, with the issue on the outdoor dining and smoking? And I know that in some quarters, that's an unpopular kind of discussion, but clearly, uh, if we're wanting the Macquarie Mall to be more inviting and inclusive, then we need to re- to revisit the conversation about no smoking and no smoking spaces, um, on the mall, so that families, and past surveys have been done with the students, university students, we, we, that, you mentioned that, you know, the, uh, vice chancellors say that, you know, the mall, you know, the CBD is the campus. Well, if we wanted to, to have a vibrant, um, night, evening, li- night life and, and, uh, people coming in, then I think, um, no smoking, how we deal with smoking in the mall has to be part of a gnar- a gnarly problem that we need to revisit.
So what would you like added councillor Green?
I think the, uh, the, the smoking in the mall and, uh, in term, you know, on, I think it's, it's another conversation that we need to have.
Yep, so can I just say, I thi- I think that's, this is just endorsing minutes is what the motion is, that, I guess something like that, maybe we, we, we discuss that, uh, the next, in preparation for the next meeting of what, what you want to do, or it's maybe just a matter of bringing up with, bringing up with the CEO, if it's a matter of a lot, a legislation that's in place that should be implemented. I don't know, as part of.
I'm sorry, I, I was thought, I was just adding it into the other discussion and another workshop or something that we would be having a discussion on, on that, I meant for that. I meant for that.
Yeah, okay, cool.
No, I was just nodding in agreement with councillor Green, I think it's a good discussion to have, but at this point, it's just about the minutes, but, you know, definitely on the, on the table for a good discussion before the next meeting.
So I think this identifies there needs to be a strategic discussion around, uh, ongoing strategic discussion around the, the CBD in other parts of Liverpool. All right, uh, do we have a mover and seconder? Move councillor McNaul, seconded.
Councillor Moon, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it carried. Okay, questions with notice? Yep, answer's been provided, question one?
Sorry, I, I do have a question, um, I probably should have worded it differently, but I'm going to have to submit it if I don't get an answer today. I was more inquiring which councillors have actually presented their legal fees to be covered by the insurance, not the way that I worded it. Um, has that occurred? That was one of my other questions, and the other question was.
Sorry, what specifically is your question?
It says here that.
You know, how do you want to reward it, just so they can clearly answer.
Which councillors have had their legal fees presented for payment by the insurer?
You want to take it on notice, or you want to answer it, ideally this is a question with notice?
We'll take it on notice, ge- given, I haven't got an answer.
Yeah.
And, and I, I just don't know, I'll seek the advice of the, the general council, whether I'm even allowed to give an answer.
Well, yeah, I, ideally these are questions with notice, so when you have a question with notice and then you give questions without notice, kind of defeats the purpose of questions with notice, so.
That's fine, I'll, I'll resubmit it next, next meeting, there was an answer to one of my questions, but they didn't answer it. It talked about the excess, and it's saying that it hasn't been factored into the budget, so if it's not factored into the budget, how will it be paid?
Yeah, through the, through the chair, um, sorry councillor, that it is, it does say in answer to question four, that we are awaiting confirmation from the insurers about this, and we will, uh, give you that information the minute we get it.
Hmm, there may be an applicable excess.
Yep, all right, cool. Number two, question with notice two. So we'll now move on to plan 05, which is in addendum book five, page three, tab one, with the recommendation on page three.
I'm happy to move that way.
Move councillor McNaul.
I, I have a question.
We have a seconder? Seconded councillor Hart or councillor Green? Uh, discussion, councillor Sev, do you got a question?
Yep, um, it says that in this report, it's going to be a 293,000 shortfall, um, of, it's budgeted for 960,000 in the 2425 financial year. So what implications will this have on things like frontline services, um, anything else that bus it, it's going to suffer as a rel- result of this shortfall?
I refer to the CEO.
So through the chair, thank you for the question councillor, um, there's actually a bit of flux on this report, so we, obviously we price the ESCs, which are commodity at a certain date, uh, that number has improved significantly in the last week, and is forecast to improve more significantly over the next two weeks where we've, where we can set a spot price for a sale. Uh, I'd expect to put 30 to 40% on the, on the sale of ESCs, uh, but that's subject to a discussion with, uh, the timing, and, uh, I've been speaking to the general councils, court director of corporate services and the CFO about the right time to sell the ESCs. At the moment, their trajectory is north, and we're getting more money per day. Of course, we're not in the, uh, the gambling, uh, business at council, um, so we'll make a decision. And then the next decision is, is when we sell, if we, if we hit our spot price and it goes over to July 1, we have to realise that in the next financial year rather than this one. So there's a number of considerations, all I can say is that we are having daily discussions about the sale of ESCs, uh, and I don't think that number, that exposure number will be anywhere near that, in fact, if we sold them tonight, it would be, uh, in, in, in positive.
Any further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it carried. Next item is com, uh, 05.
I have a motion.
Yeah, what's your motion councillor?
Uh, one, as per the book, two, as per the book, three, briefing and governance meetings to be open to the public and live streamed.
Uh, do you have a seconder? No, motion lapses.
Question, can we legally do that?
Well, um, uh, yes, and if you go to a mayor or minute, which I put up, uh, I think last year, where the minister for local government, the honourable Ron Honing, put forward a discussion paper regarding the proposed code of, uh, meeting practice changes, and he's been very clear where he wants to have briefing sessions, live streamed and made public, uh, so, uh, and committee meetings. So I did put that floor, but, to the floor, but council rejected that, uh, motion at the time. So to answer your question, I think, yes, legally, we can, if the minister is advocating for it, but I know the minister.
So to answer your question, I think, yes, legally, we can if the minister is advocating for it, but I know the minister from time to time does get points of law uh uh interpreted by mistake.
Point of order.
What's that?
That's an unfair reflection upon uh the minister by yourself there, um which uh.
I can quantify it councillor if you like.
I don't think you could.
I can, hundred percent. A jud- a judge has actually.
No, a judge has, but a judge has made a different ruling to what I think you think that that ruling is.
He ru- he he ruled.
Ruling is relating to the interim report.
Yes.
And that being uh uh and being acted upon beyond the powers of the minister in the way that it was, that's correct. But it's nonetheless a document that exists at law and is a document that can exist. Uh that's what you'll find the judgment actually says.
That all the judgment found in our favor with respect to procedural fairness not being observed.
On one very, very tenuous point, uh and in fact largely.
Thank you, councillor, I'm not having this discussion here.
No.
I'm not, I'm not having discussion.
Continue the discussion, you.
Because it's, because a judge made a ruling on this that said that we weren't, the minister did not observe procedural fairness by releasing an interim report. So it's, a judge has done it, I'm not gonna sit here and debate what a judge has done, it's not a court of appeal, so. Thank you councillor.
Appeal would be, I think, dismissed in any event.
Well, the government had an election dinner day, so thank you. If we wanna go to court, I'm thinking um we're a council, not a court councillor. Alright, uh yeah, anyway, let's move on. Yes, I've got a, so councillor Harland, zero, if you would, if you wanted to, yes.
Uh could I? Further comment? If if it's legal, I can't see a reason why we don't live stream it. I I see an issue in getting the audience to come there, simply because we don't have the facilities and the room to do so. But I can't see any problem in live streaming it.
Uh Mister Mayor.
Yes councillor?
I think um Rostevsky moved a motion and you were asking whether there was a seconder and you indicated that you had actually supported this.
I supported the mayoral minute, yes, I supported the the mayoral minute, which I'm happy to put it back up if you'd like to.
Uh we can just support councillor Rostevsky.
Oh, but there was more other changes that the minister put into place, which is gonna be, you know, which would be coming very soon, so.
But you're not fundamentally against the live streaming of governance meetings?
I'm, I think that we should be, we should adopt everything the minister put forward and be one of the first councils to do so, because there are very good changes the minister proposed.
So you're of the view that governance committee meetings should be livestreamed?
It's not only governance, it's briefing sessions, it's all of those meetings, plus the other changes that the minister put forward. So I can bring that up and put it, put it all back up if you like.
Oh, I think we can do it right now, it's relevant. On that basis, I'll second councillor Rostevsky's motion.
All right, I'll pu- I'll I'll put up a mayoral minute that says that we adopt uh uh the mayoral minute, I've gotta see what month it was. Uh adopting all the changes that the Minister for Law Government proposed.
Well, it's not in the agenda.
It's a mayoral minute, I can put it up anytime during.
Where is it? We haven't seen it.
Give me a moment, I need a couple of minutes and I'll pull it up. Does anyone remember what council meeting it was? I'm thinking October, September, no, no, it wasn't, it wasn't October, it was September, I think it was November, December. I think it was November, just bear in mind, let me just pull it up. Because I was uh, I was quite upset that it didn't go through, thought the minister would like us being one of the only councils adopting it.
Well, can't we just continue with the motion if everyone agrees that it should be livestreamed? You can bring your mayoral minute after next break, please.
Yeah, we'll just, just give me a couple of minutes and we will um, we will get to it.
The the purpose of this, Mister Mayor, the purpose of this item is also to move governance committee meetings to the evening. Your mayoral minute doesn't cover that, so why can't they just operate separately?
Yeah, we'll just make it, make it, whatever it is, bear in mind, it'll be a couple of minutes. Yes, it's on the screen, oh fantastic, there we go, wonderful, thank you for that. So twenty to November, well done, it was um, who said November? Wonderful, thank you. Councillor Green, yes, thank you, councillor Green. So so this was, oh really, the Office of Law Government is completing a comprehen- and I'll add on to this, the points regarding moving the briefing sessions to where is it?
Um is this motion now interposing and replacing the one that's already before the floor? Or do we have to finalize what's on the floor first before procedurally moving on?
No, a mayoral minute can be introduced at any time and we technically didn't even have a mover and a seconder, the motion.
Yeah, councillor Khanib seconded it.
Yeah, but I called the motion had lapsed already before we went into.
You didn't make a ruling that it had lapsed, you didn't.
No, no, I did, I did pardon.
Didn't.
Huh? Yeah, I know what I said, so.
Question that, but anyway.
Uh excuse me councillor, I know what I said, alright? I said the motion had lapsed, then the deputy mayor asked a question. So so I'll add the points one and two onto the mayoral minute, which is adopt the revised meeting schedule effective July twenty-five and not to July, not to July, December meeting dates. As as further points to this. So if we go back to the mayoral minute. So can we just go back up so I can read the mayoral minute, please? Can, can we, can we just scroll up for the moment and we'll fix up? No. So can we just bring back the mayoral minute back up, please? Oh, love. There we go, wonderful, thank you. So if we just go back up to the top, please, if you don't mind? Um so the Office of Law Government is completing a comprehensive review of the councillor conduct framework, proposing updates to promote accountability, transparency, integrity across New South Wales councils. These recommendations cover critical areas including clearer behaviour standards, uh refine dispute resolution and penalty framework and measures to restore professionalism in council meetings. Liverpool Council's endorsement of these changes reflects our commitment to governance, excellence and public trust. So if we go to the key recommendations uh that the minister would like, one, uh change of the Code of Conduct and Oath of Office. Uh enhance Code of Conduct Code of Conduct uh requirements, OLG proposes aligning council conduct with parliamentary standard, establishing clearer behavioural expectations. Updates to the Oath of Office will further reinforce council's commitment to ethical public service. Two, changes to the defin- uh to the definition of uh and assessment of council behaviour. One, clearer behaviour definitions. Revised definitions are proposed to better address significant conduct issues and reduce minor complaints, focusing the complaints process on substantive matters. Uh stricter regulations for property developers and real estate agents. The OLG recommends stricter standards for councils with ties to property development or real estate to address potential conflicts of interest, ensuring impartial decision making. Uh a- addressing inappropriate lobbying. The OLG proposes guidelines to address inappropriate lobbying, ensure councils engage with stakeholders transparently and avoid undue influence that could impact council decisions. Three, change dispute resolution and penalty framework, statewide peer panel for behavioural issues. A statewide panel experienced councils would handle behaviour-related complaints, providing a fair and peer-reviewed oversight mechanism. Simplify conflict of interest management. The OLG recommends managing significant conflicts of interest at a state level, applying a structured penalty system to ensure consistency across councils. Uh referral of significant uh sanctions. For serious breaches, OLG proposes significant sanctions be referred to an appropriate independent tribunal or body, ensuring that higher-level penalties are reviewed and administered uh by an impartial authority. Four, receiving, restoring dignity to council meetings. Increase transparency and order in meetings. The OLG recommends empowering mayors to address disruptions by imposing sanctions to ensure respect and order with council meetings. Uh banning closed-door councillor sessions. To improve transparency, the OLG suggests banning private councillor briefings and ensuring all council deliberations remain accessible to the public and fostering community trust. These recommendations represent essential reforms aimed at upholding integrity, transparency and accountability in local councils across New South Wales. By supporting these changes, the Liverpool City Council demonstrates its commitment to the highest standards of governance and professional conduct in serving our community. And the recommendation that was at that time, which uh I'll put forward again, is council formally endorses each recommendation in the OLG's review of the council conduct framework, recognizing these changes as essential for maintaining and enhancing public trust in law government. Two, make a submission to the OLG outlining its formal endorsement in support of the proposed framework. Three, in its submission, advocate for the New South Wales Government conducting a similar conduct framework at the state level, ensuring consistency and reform, reinforcing public confidence in governance across all tiers. Four, directs the acting CEO, or now the CEO, to submit Liverpool Council's endorsement by the by OLG's specific deadline, which now all that's passed, I think um, a remove point, uh four. Um in, five, immediately implement open briefing sessions and committee meetings. Uh and six, write to the minister expressing our support. Councillor Hart?
I I've just got, I wanna make a few points here. Um first of all, I think it might be wise if we got a report coming back to council um on the financial costs of uh broadcasting uh um all governance and committee uh or governance committee meetings uh and briefing sessions. Um I I can imagine that I could probably need specific equipment to do the uh live streaming. Does it have to be held in the chambers as opposed to be held in the um boardroom? Um any forgone income, stuff like that because of this change. Um so if that's amenable to everyone, I think that might be a better way of doing so. And we don't have those recommendations in front of us either. I think it's important that we can see those recommendations that the minister made in the past or the OLG's made in the past, and I think everyone agrees with making these sessions public, but I think we should get a report back first before we proceed.
So I think in, on that basis, they're very valid points. So it would be a matter of adopting point one and point two, so the briefing sessions happen immediately and the rest of the items be brought back as a report, including the financial impact and the OLG circular.
Oh, sorry. A- and its implementation.
Yep, yep, no, that's fair enough. So I'm happy to have her in the way, councillor Monahan.
If we can go back to the um mayoral minute that's uh now before the floor, um if we go to the um, the the recom- uh sorry, the uh points that are proposed to be implemented, not the the fluff beforehand. Um given that the submissions have now closed, shouldn't points two uh and three be removed? Because we can't make a submission to uh a process in which submissions have now closed.
Yep, so how about instead in point two, rather than say make a submission, just, we can say just write to the OLG? Um and you can remove, remove point three in its whole, I would say. And on briefing sessions, add the words and all committee meetings. Alright, and so now if we then were to take, uh can we go and get point one and two of the recommendation, please? Of the original, of the motion in the booklet. Okay, so can we go back to the, the, um, all right, yeah, cool, oh there you go, just yet, yeah, sorry, go back down? Now to the actual recommendations. Formerly. Yep, so, so point five. So I think we have to write, um, receive a report on points one, two and three. Pri- prior to implementation. And the report to cover cost and implementation. Was that what you're referring to councillor Hart?
Correct.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Yes councillor Moon.
The timing, if we can have them both on the same day, but starting later, so that for the people that can't attend the briefing, they can still attend um the governance meeting. So therefore, if we have them both on a Tuesday, where it starts at the one, I think one o'clock, one till five, and then the remainder.
So, so just before I go to councillor Green, um uh what other councils do? I know that they pretty much have, like, I think it's Sutherland Council, every Monday night they have a meeting, so they have a, you know, their committees just meet on Monday nights. So everyone knows that that night, for example, is their meeting night, and one of those, once a month, that's actually their official council meeting. So that's something that, you know, if you're gonna, because there's no point just moving this committee to nighttime. If it's about getting people there, then they all should be moved to the nighttime. Um and then you just pick which night you want it, so that everyone council know on, whether it's, I think there's, I think there's um uh benefit in having consistently on the same day of the week, so everyone knows that's the night that they're out and it's less confusing. Um so I think that's, you should probably, I'd recommend councils look at that as well. And it helps, I guess, from a resourcing as well from an organisation, because we all need staff out there. Yeah, sorry councillor Green, my apologies.
I I wondered, have we received any word as to when the minister's going to release his decisions on um or report on uh the changes to the Code of Conduct framework? That of this is ba- that, you know, on what what he was wanting to do? Because at the moment, they were key, they were in the discussion paper, that the report has actually been, the final report hasn't been released, and I'm wondering uh what the final report, have we heard, when it might come through or?
I haven't seen anything from council or OGNSW point of view.
Yep, because I guess they were, their decisions that would may be also be considered, um you know, from the collective of uh all councils across the state.
Yeah, I don't know if do we, do we have any, has anyone heard anything from staff?
Mister Mayor, with respect, I I don't see an issue with it, but how can we right now, this mayoral minute, support it without knowing exactly what they're, like how? How can we support it without knowing exactly what the formal recommendations were?
Oh, the recommend, there was a, oh, there was a circular that was released to us last year, which we've all, which we all had. But I guess once again, this now is basically, what this is saying is, you know, by, it's achieve what you want to achieve by having the meetings at the time, and move to nighttime, so that's achieved. But then what it does, saying, okay, well, all those other points come back to us at a later date.
This doesn't achieve that, is this, is this your new mayoral minute or do you?
Yeah, that's it.
So this is, it's it's separate then, because the recommendation is per the book on page seven, doesn't, is not included in points one to four. So are you encompassing your mayoral minute into the, into the
Yes.
Agenda item, because it's not there.
Yes, that's the intent of it. Isn't it up there somewhere, where is? Yeah, added point, so the point one and two of the regi- of the recommendation gets added on to this.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
So add them in there. And just finally, when you refer to briefing sessions and committee meetings, you probably should be specific and refer to governance meetings.
Yeah, so committees and governance meetings.
Uh and what 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 does it mean there on point four, receive a report on points one, two and three?
Yes, councillor Hart's point, councillor's heart point of saying, you know, there is, there's budget implications to live stream meetings.
Hmm.
You know, and where do they happen? Do they have to happen down here? Do they happen upstairs? You know, so there's technical issues and all that. So it's saying.
Which, which point? So we we get a report about adopting the revised meeting schedule?
Well, now that order has changed, so it'd be, it would now be, it'd be on three, four, uh points, on points three, four. So if you go back down a bit, please, on points three and four, so remove one and two and make it three and four.
So uh shouldn't, shouldn't point three then
Three.
Indicate supports in principle, not formally endorses, if we're asking for a report about how that's to be implemented?
Yep, great, we can change that, support in principle. Yep, great, well, if we can change that, support in principle. Alright, and, and point five.
Four would have to write to the OLG, uh, outlining councils in principle support.
Yep. Yeah, rather than it's formal, yep.
To include the cost for point five, which is.
And we'd have to add point five on to it as well, so receive reports on point three, four and five.
I mean, there is no problem with having the meetings here, we've already got the equipment, why would there be a budget implication? We don't have to hold it upstairs in that room.
Staff over time, I can think of one straight away, um.
That, that could be. Yeah, I'm, I'm happy, yeah, so, um, that's a good question, so there, there, there'd be, uh. At the moment, we, we're starting the staff at midday, uh, trying to cover off on that. Uh, period of time and also the opportunity costs. So, uh, these chambers are available to lease and rent to the community and, uh, or corporates. Uh, it's another day or night that they can't be, that's, I guess that's the re- the real cost. The actual, uh, AV and all the stuff, equipment, as you rightly say, councillor Restevsky's in situ already.
Just, just one thing, um, in the merril minute, there's something about sanctions, but. There needs to be defined, what, what does that mean? There needs to be, sanctions can mean anything.
All that comes up, it's part of the report, because it's not, it's not specifically outlined in the resolution. It's more about what the OLG recommend, what the OLG recommended at that point in time. So I assume all that comes back in the report. Councillor Hart?
Uh, can we just go back to, um, the current motion? Um.
You want the, the previous recommendation that talked about?
This one here.
Oh, the current motion, yeah.
Point five says immediately implement open briefing sessions, aren't we getting a report to? Explain the logistics of doing so before we immediately, or before we implement the open door briefing sessions?
So you'd put.
So perhaps just say support in principle subject to the report?
Yep. The implementation. Yep.
Thank you. Through the chair, just a bit of clarification for the operational staff. So when we say all governance committee meetings, does that mean governance committee meetings? Or it's all meetings that manage governance?
That's all governance and committee meetings.
So every committee meeting would be open to the public? Every, every committee meeting that the council does?
Yep.
Okay, so if that's the intent of council, we'll, we'll incorporate, um, the quantum there, because all is all.
Yeah. Councillor Hart?
I just, uh, it should also include the cost of security, because, coming to think of it. Um, because if we're gonna have open, uh, committee meetings or council briefing sessions. Um, uh, and if it's in this type of format, where the, the, it's publicly available, like, there should be, um, considerations for security.
I think that's covered under cost, so I think the, go to detail, councillor McNaught. Councillor McNaught?
Uh, sorry, I just had a question about, um, the logistics, and I suppose we're getting a report. But if I can ask for this to be included in the report somewhere. I can think of some of the committees that I'm on, such as the youth council and things like that, where it may be problematic. Um, it may not be covered in the charter that we actually open that up to the public. Um, so I think that we, we might be putting the cart before the horse in some, uh, circumstances. And we would need to check on committee charters as well to see what specifically is covered there.
Uh, wasn't the, um, original, uh, merril minute, uh, aiming at all committees?
If I can just have my question answered though, thank you.
Thank you. Through the chair. I just need the question again, councillor.
Will the charters have to be updated?
Just wanted to clarify that, you know, I can think of some of the committees that I'm on, that I attend. Um, where it may be problematic, and I don't know that it's covered in the charter, to be able to live stream all of those. And, and whether the charters would need to be looked at for all committees before we do this.
Thank you, councillor. Through the chair, so what we'll do in, in, in the report, we'll look at all the committees. And then we'll have a look at each of those committees charter, and if, if the charter prohibits the live streaming, I understand there's children involved in some of them. So that's a clear indicator for me, so we'll, we'll take a sensible approach to that, uh, the, the concept of all. And we'll report, where, where the charter. Um, allows, we will, we will.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the, the OLG circular that was released talked about all committees and, uh, governance, uh, whether they're made public. Uh, councillor Green?
Uh, I'm just wondering, um, within like a governance committee or a briefing. Uh, how will confidential matters then be? Discussed if there's a confidential matter that needs a presentation? Does that mean that we just go into confidential, confidential session? I, I don't quite know how the logistics of it would, um.
The code, the code of, the.
All matters.
The code of meeting practice applies for committees, so you'd, you'd observe that same process, councillor Green. Where you'd go into, you'd move into closed session under the relevant part of the act.
Okay.
Cool. Alright, I'll take that as being, saying put the motion, councillor? Alright, if there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against, I declare carried. Next item is com zero six, um, page nine, tab three, recommendation on page ten.
Can I just clarify, Mister Mayor, just before we move on, because it, it had there that it was moved by you, but it had no seconded. So just for the record, was it the merril minute, did that take over that nom?
The merril minute, yes.
Would that merril minute stand on its own now?
Yes.
Alright, so we're, we're still gonna go back to the item which is in the book, which talks about moving the, the meeting times to the evening, because we haven't crossed that, right?
Yeah, technically, technically we have to resolve something, but we can note that we've dealt with it, you know, in the simulation, yeah.
Just my understanding of what we were moving was the whole purpose was to, as the discussion was occurring, we all agreed that you were mending the two, correct?
Yes.
But we admitted to include, adopts revised meeting effective July twenty twenty five. Because essentially what I thought you were doing was bringing in your merril minute as redrafted and constructed, and adding it in to the agenda item.
So proceed, which we, which we've done.
In com five?
Yeah, we've, we've covered that now in the merril minute, those two points. Yes, hmm? They were in the minute, so now, for this one, because it's on the books, we'd say, uh, notes the merril minute the council adopted, that covers these matters.
Just separately.
Yeah, just say receive and note the report, or, yeah, as a separate thing. So thank you, councillor Carneby, we should do that before we move on, so. Somebody happy to, I'm happy to move that way, is there a second at councillor AJ?
But hold on, hold on a second, isn't this the motion that actually lapsed?
Yeah, there wasn't a move in it, yeah, in the first instance, there wasn't a, uh, it lapsed. In the first instance, yes.
Has it been reported? Is that what you're saying?
No, because the, it still exists on the agenda, so just, just to clean it up, we receive and note it, and note the merril minute.
Okay.
Cool, alright, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, yep, sorry, can you put your mic on, please?
So the, the motion now before, on the floor, is moved in your name, and receives and notes the merril minute. And then, so that council and one, two and three should be deleted, correct?
No, because that was.
But we've already passed that in your merril minute.
Yeah, but it's there, the way that they do it, correct me if I'm wrong, is that everything, anything that's put gets recorded in the minutes. Doesn't necessarily disappear.
But didn't it lapse, so it does disappear? So we've got no, so if there was, in, in earlier, you did say that you said that it lapsed, so if it lapsed, there's. No motion before the floor, we've still got the item on the books, so the motion would have to be.
Yeah.
Uh, plan zero five, oh, sorry, com zero five is moved in your name, seconded, uh, whoever is seconding it. And it simply receives and notes the merril minute, and that council one, two and three should be deleted, because that's not the motion on the floor, that's lapsed, isn't that correct?
No, they, they keep that as a record of saying there was, a motion was put, there was no seconder, and then they have that line item there that says the item has lapsed, there's a no seconder. That's been the general, the general practice. But yeah, well, now we can say, because, when, we still have to deal with the motion as such. Yeah, and that's, and that, that now covers it under the, so in that bold writing, we now cover that. Where they go?
Which is?
Where's the, can you go back up? Yeah. Yeah, it's fine. No, no, my, my apologies, good. So if you go, if you go, if you go back up, please, to that, that note that was there, yep. From I'm satisfied with that and the councillors are. Cool, alright. Next item is com zero six, page nine, tab three, with a recommendation on page ten.
Happy to move that way.
Move councillor McNaught, second to councillor Hart. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare carried. We're done with CFD, let's move to operations zero three. Page fi- still in book five, page five, five, six, tab five, recommendation on page five hundred fifty seven, floodplain and stormwater management. Uh, policy. Book. One, five, five, you got five?
Five B's?
I didn't say five B, it says, it just says five here, I think which is five, five B? Sorry, I'll just check quick. Yep, looks about right. Page five fifty six. Thank you, yep. Councillor Hart?
Uh, I'd like to move that we defer.
Do you have a seconder? Seconder, moon. Any discussion?
Sorry, can we defer it to a?
Governance.
Yes.
Session. Yep, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare carried. Next item is operations zero four, page five, seven, six, tab six.
Yeah, I've noticed some, um, uh, errors with the, uh, charter. Uh, if you have a look at four V one, one, one. Uh, that was a resolution passed by council, then you've got the charter points eight point one, eleven, twelve point one. That don't reflect the council motion. So the charter needs to reflect the council motion as per four V I I I.
And to that end, I move that we defer it to a governance committee meeting.
Be the second the deferral for more discussion?
Yeah. So move that it be deferred, councillor Hart, councillor McNaught, to a governance meeting. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare carried. Okay. Committee zero five, page five eighty nine, tab seven, recommendation on page five hundred and eighty nine.
I just have a, I, I mean, I'm happy to move it for the sake of being able to ask some questions, if any. Unless I can ask questions without that, but I don't think I can.
Um, so you can, you can ask just, just a.
I just wanna know why we're have, we're reporting minutes of a meeting that didn't exist. And, you know, it's just confusing to say the meeting commenced at ten O two, but then it didn't have quorum, so it didn't commence because it didn't have quorum. I don't, I just don't understand, I understand if we have to report that we attempted to have one, but it just doesn't make sense that a meeting started without quorum, because it doesn't actually start.
Thank you. Through the chair, you, you're correct councillor, but, uh, our intent here was to describe. In a transparent manner. The, the, what occurred on the day, um. I'll refer to the general counsel for any further comment.
If, if, if there's a serious concern about this, may, may, maybe it could be deferred, so I can give some advice on it. I, I did not advise on this report, this report.
Thank you. Through the chair, uh, I'll get some ad- added information from the director, corporate services.
Through the CEO, um, the, the, whilst council can't make decisions, or the governance committee can't make recommendations. When they hasn't got, haven't got a quorum, um, this, to my knowledge, and we'll have to get this confirmed. There's, there's nothing, there's nothing preventing that meeting proceeding on the basis that motions can't be put. But we'll need to get that confirmed.
Order on councillor McNaught's side.
To defer that we, um, defer this item for a further discussion, just so we get it procedurally correct.
Yeah, it's a procedure, move councillor McNaught, seconded councillor AJ. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, I'd, against, I declare carried. Councillors, I'll, um, call for a short recess till nine, ten, um, thank you.
Uh, Mr Deputy Mayor, can we just make sure it's recorded in the minutes that the mayor had to leave the meeting for, uh, family reasons?
Thank you, we'll do that. Thank you. So the first item, or the item that's next on the list is notices of motions. Book one, page 246, tab 24.
Oh yeah, move that way.
You've moved that way.
Second.
A mover, we need a seconder. Uh, councillor Monahan, I'll get it right. And, uh, any discussion?
I've just got a question.
Question.
I'm all good with the, with getting that information, but, and I haven't looked through it as detailed as obviously the author of the motion, um, but are there some of the, some of the, um, questions that are in the notice of motion which are quite question-like, not answered in their reply? Is that why we're putting it forward as a notice of motion?
Councillor.
Councillor Rystewski.
Oh yes, sorry, um, no, they're, they're, um, they're looking at an analysis of, um, oops, this is on record, uh, they're looking at an analysis on whether the legend centers should be, um, run by council internally, like Fairfield and Bangstown and, uh, uh, Campbelltown and, and Blacktown, which is, I like their model, operated by controlled entity. Um, there was a report done in 2018, but we need to look at it being 2025 and a new council, especially since, if you have a look, council has spent one million dollars on the Michael Wenden Centre, but we don't operate the centre ourselves. So, um, it doesn't make economic sense to be, um, spending this money and without doing a further analysis.
Yeah, sorry, and apologies, I do note that above, um, point three, it does say preliminary findings, so, thank you.
Thank you. So, you need to, any other further discussions? I put the motion. All those in favours, aye? Anybody against? No, so it's unanimous. Notice of motion O2, support for local businesses through tender loadings in Liverpool LGA. It's page 249, tab 25. Yes councillor?
I move that way with a change.
I'm happy to second it, um, but I mean, we're moving and seconding on the basis that point three and five are withdrawn, so it will be one, two and four that proceed, which will become one, two, three.
Thank you. Yes, I read through that and council already does those things, so hence I, as a councillor, I was going to ask the question, if we already do that, why does it need to be in there? So thanks for removing it, I thought that was, uh, the thing to do. So, uh, so I put the motion.
Sorry, can I just ask one?
Sorry.
Yeah, sorry, no, I just have a question now about, it's gonna be number three now, part one. I thought that in the response it says that we have clear criteria and guidelines. I'm more than happy with like point two and point three, but I think it already said that we have those criteria and guidelines.
We do.
I, I think they have something in the chief executive's report in the bottom. Procurement will establish a process to monitor and report on contracts that are awarded to local suppliers, so, um, that's, that's the key aspect of it.
So I, I still think that that, like, that points two and three that would relate to, but not point one.
CEO, did you want a comment?
Point one is just...
Sorry, three point one.
Oh, three point one. Yeah, three point one, yeah.
If we could remove three point one, it was my policy.
Yes.
You're saying that's already in the policy, exactly. Thank you. So you're in favour, anybody against that? Councillor Canib, did you want? Very good. Okay, I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Unanimous? Good, unanimous. Inclusion of councillors' political affiliations on the council website, NOM O3, page 251, 26.
I'll move that way.
Councillor, uh, Canib seconded. Any discussion? Councillor Mon, councillor Hart, sorry.
Uh, I just have an issue with point two, where it directs council, council's communications department. First of all, is, is it within our remit and power to direct council staff or direct the CEO? My second point with regards to point two is, um, it's directing council staff to update promptly, uh, political affiliations. I, I, I don't understand why the onus is on council staff to discover and find a councillor's political affiliation. If a councillor does change their political affiliation, uh, they should have a positive obligation to report it to council. Um, and I'll leave it at that for now.
I, I just wanna say, I mean, there's no need to complicate this, um, city of Parramatta, Kennedy-Bangstown, Sutherland, these really big councils already doing this, so if they can do it, I'm sure we can do it as well.
Okay, no worries, but I, I, and I'd seek the advice from, I'd like to seek the advice from staff here is, um, whether point two was lawful.
Uh, thank, thank you through the chair. Look, uh, the, the adjustment should, should properly read that council, direct the CEO. That, 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 that point's valid. Uh, so task the CEO with implementing. Yep, that's, so we just remove the words council's communication department and just put chief executive officer.
So I've just got, um, I'm wondering whether we can just add to point one, um, include a clear indication of each councillor's political affiliation. If we can add from the time of their election and updated when any changes occur.
Uh, current, uh, current and former political affiliations.
From the time of their election.
Sorry, happy to incorporate that councillor Rystewski.
Oh, happy to, I mean, um, there are councillors here who have been members of different political parties, I've got no problem with that.
Uh, since their election, I believe there's been one, and it was the mover of this.
Um, can you clarify?
Sorry, what I meant was since their election, um, to the council term.
Uh, I just, I think the purpose of this motion is to include which party you belong to, and if you don't belong to one, and you, you're an independent representing the community, that's all it does. I'm proud to be recognized as a, as a Labour representative of council, and I'm sure others are the same. I think that's all this intends to achieve. I just, if it just, one should indicate specifically, I don't understand what, so the former political affiliations since their election to the council term. If you're wanting to, to, to have that, well then it can extend since you've been on coun, what's the point of that? What are we gonna have, former Labour, former Liberal, what's the, there's no purpose of that. It's just so the community can identify if you belong to a party or if you don't belong to a party. As I understand it, and that's the way the NOM reads, I don't see the need to overcomplicate it.
I have, yeah. I'll take your point councillor, that's an opinion and, and I respect that. Um, but, you know, point three does say council notes this initiative promotes transparency and accountability, and I think that that adds to any transparency and accountability that we're trying to achieve.
The same can be said that if somebody on this council was previously a member of any other political party, then that would also achieve transparency.
That we're talking about councillor bios in a council term. Um, so these bios would be updated each council term. Um, so I think that if we're looking for transparency, that that's important.
Whilst I hear comments, but if we're talking about transparency and who people are, where they belong to, and which parties they've been of, isn't the community expecting to know that if someone's been elected on council for 20 years, whether or not they've been associated with a previous party or at any point in time been partied? Isn't that the whole part of transparency, so people know exactly who are representing them in their previous party affiliations? Again, I don't think digging back and selecting a timeframe is relevant. We can do that all we like, we can procure a timeframe as far as we, we can go back. Again, that's not the intent of this. I don't see any councillor here having an issue with being identified for which party they're from. That's all it intends to achieve.
I'm not sure disclosing, uh, a, a political affiliation before a...
I'm not sure disclosing a political affiliation before a councillor was on council, elected to council is relevant to this whatsoever.
Is if we disclose whether or not a councillor resides in the LGA, perhaps that's relevant to disclose. There's many things that can be relevant to disclose in a bio, but again, if we want to open up a can of worms, we can. Or we can just include which party affiliations we belong to. It's pretty simple.
It's up to you councillors.
Look, I think we're just being, we're playing silly buggers here. Let's just, like councillor Keneb said, the current council term, if someone's elected as a Labour and they change during that term, fine, get it updated. If we're going to go back 20 years, a bit ridiculous. I mean, we can, but it's like we're playing silly bugger. Let's just move on. We've got more important stuff to get through.
So you're saying leave one as is?
No, no, one should be that each councillor's political affiliation, that's it. And from current and all the way to term can be removed.
Political. That would be my belief.
Yes.
But you're the councillors who are voting on this.
Mr Deputy Mayor, I'd like to move an amendment, and point one was what it was previously.
Well, then, if that's what we want to do, I want to move as part of my initial motion, that in councillor bios, you identify whether or not you live in the LGA. No, no, if that's what we're going to do, and that's what we're going to make out of this, and it's clear what people are trying to prosecute on the council floor, when it's simply to say, if any particular councillor, like I am, to be identified as Labour, if I've got any issue with it, I'd voice it now. Again, the crux of this is just to identify it. So if that's what's going to occur, then I want to amend the initial motion.
I just have a point to make that I think that we're getting into territory that is not necessarily productive or necessary in a bio. Perhaps if we have the freedom to provide information that we would like to, which I think we already do in our bio, then we can. You know, I don't think we need to have a stock standard bio. If people want to disclose certain information, then they can. Or, I mean, I just, I'm trying to be productive and transparent for people. But, you know, I think that if we're going to start prescribing what everybody needs to write on their bio, we're getting into dangerous territory.
From my point of view, and I don't normally argue that, but I would think you'd have to be very careful what you say in there, the buyer. This should, in my humble opinion, this should be voluntary. It should not be compulsory. You know, if you wanted to give this information to the community, that's your choice. I do not think that we should be forcing anybody to disclose that kind of information. It's personal information. I think it should be just left that. You want to put your political affiliations, that's fine personally. I think that's what it ought to be, but you're making the decision. I think let's, let's not complicate it.
Four, and I think that this has gone on for far too long, but if.
Councillor Hart, you're pushing this? Did you want to leave it as is or?
Sorry, can we just go back up to the substantive motion? I'm happy to withdraw my amendment.
Thank you. So can we get to a resolution? Thank you councillors. Those in favour? Those against? Two, four. I rule that it's accepted. Division. To councillors, councillor AJ? Forty, okay, thank you. We've got that.
I'd press that a formal division is being called. Yeah, I'd press that a formal division be recalled of all councillors who voted.
Division, let's do it. Four. Got that? Against? Good, thank you. Next item, notice of motion O four, provision of food and snacks for public attendees at Liverpool City Council meetings. Page two five three, councillor?
I'll move that way.
You move that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion, yes, motion. Okay, and councillor Keneb seconded. Any discussion?
I just have some questions. Sorry, I just want to know whether or not it's possible to get a report on what this might cost before we commit to it, which I think would be prudent. And also whether, so, and also whether or not, point two says to allocate the necessary funds from the existing budget designated for dinner provisions, which comes from the councillor's budget, I believe. If I could get some assist clarification on whether that can actually occur, and whether or not it might be better to get a report about how this can occur before we commit to occurring.
Anybody else?
I'll get there in a sec. Okay, thank you. Through the chair. So first of all, the notice of motion needs to describe what additional food and snacks are supplied, because my response advises council firstly that we do provide basic refreshments to members of the public attending council, including water tea, coffee and packaged biscuits. And also need to, council to consider that we, you need to find a funding source. And you also need to consider the concept described tonight as all meetings. Are now we catering for all meetings?
Well, they're all going to be livestreamed and open to the public, aren't they? Isn't that what we resolved and the mayor put in his merrill minute?
Yeah, subject to the report coming back to council describing the additional costs. So is it the intent of council that we should consider the implications of that report and give you a costing on all meetings?
Reason I bring this up, I mean, we're inviting people to turn up and, you know, a biscuit is not good enough, in my opinion. You know, we need to be a bit more respectful for people that come straight from work and don't have time to eat. We want people turning up. This is a chamber for the ratepayers. So that's the reason I've put it up here, because, you know, we don't need to provide them a sit down meal, but something that, you know, sandwiches and wraps and that kind of stuff. I mean, it's common sense.
Sorry councillor, just through the chair. As I described, but confirmed by the director of corporate services, if we need to know how much money we're going to allocate, so we need to do the work first and then we need a budget.
Deputy Mayor, I believe that there was a proposed increase to the pay scale of councillors and the mayor this evening that approximately would have sat at about the $13,000 mark. I'm not saying we should spend $13,000, but I'm saying there's certainly a budget there of a quantum of dollars that's in the vicinity of $13,000 that we've just saved. And there's nothing to suggest that you can't, for example, spend at a council meeting, you know, a couple of hundred dollars on sandwiches that you often see at the other governance meetings and those wraps that can come from downstairs. I think it would certainly fall within that, at least for council meetings. I don't think it needs to be extended upon for governance meetings, considering they're going to be livestreamed or committee meetings. I think it's purely for council meetings because they're in the evening. I see the intent, if someone wants to come and grab a sandwich because meetings start at 6pm. I don't think that the entire $13,000 will probably be exhausted. But again, I don't know the current cost of wraps and sandwiches, so that probably can be canvassed, but I suspect that'll come back in the report. But there's certainly a funding source that we've saved tonight that can be used. And I think it's a, there's a nice ring to that, that we didn't take a pay rise and in fact that the community, you know, can opt for a sandwich and dinner when they arrive. And there's certainly nothing wrong with that. I don't think that a quantum, you know, it could be moved with a budget of up to $10,000. And if for whatever reason there needs to be a variation for that, then that can come back. But I think that that would fall within the realms of 12 council meetings per year, up to $10,000, so it wouldn't exceed.
Thank you councillor, councillor.
So, and I take on board that that would be a good, a good place to start. But again, I think that we really should get a report to see how much this is going to cost. Not just the cost of food, but if we're going to have food service, are we going to have staff to serve the food? And I don't want to overcomplicate it. I just want to report on how we do this safely and the cost that will be incurred. And then we can identify a budget, and you have identified something already. But I think we need to understand how we can do this, just a process. I'm asking whether or not, I don't want an exhaustive report, just a process of how we do it, so that we can do it effectively.
So we need to modify this in terms of subject to a report.
Yeah, the only thing I was going to say, just in response to councillor Macnair, I've been to the Environment Committee and a few others, and I know that on those occasions what they do is they'll, and there's external people there. So I suspect, and we can ask the director to clarify this, but there already is a regime, I presume, with service providers being those wraps that we often see around. They already go to those committees. So there's extending that. So people that attend those committees already get fed because they're at 6pm. I've seen that occur. There's nothing stopping the exact same, there's nothing stopping the exact same regime being offered here. So it's not the full find on, just a couple of those sandwich trays that we've seen floating around, whether it be governance meetings or committee meetings.
Thank you. I'll ask the CEO to ask the community person to elaborate on that.
Thank you. Through the chair, Director of Community and Lifestyle.
Thank you. If I, I don't think a report's required. I think we can certainly, if we're endorsing that we would provide some sandwiches and some wraps, we will do that at scale as we understand the volume that are attending. So we might fall short the first meeting, but we may, and then we can look at it from there. In terms of the expense, we have a provision that we can look at as you've pointed out. So I don't think a report will be required. I can just enable this and drive it.
And just to clarify in relation to which meetings that these would apply to, I think we make it clear that they are to be for councils' ordinary meetings.
Thank you councillors.
And so, sorry, then is point two okay as it's written, or do we need to change? Like, it comes from that existing budget, if I can just ask through the CEO, just to make sure that we've got the budget correct?
Sorry.
Yes, yes, we have an existing provision. And I assume ordinary means extraordinary in any ancillary meetings, yes. But the proper council meeting, yeah.
Thank you councillors, happy with that? I wrap it up. Sorry, councillor Hart?
Wrap it up.
Thank you. Just light refreshments, yes. Should be fine. As we've said, wraps, sandwiches, no hot dinners. Yeah, no, that's fine.
Because I was going to ask for fufu and jollof rice. Yeah, if, yeah.
Councillors, behave yourself. I put the motion. All those in favour? Thank you, unanimous. That brings us to NOM O five, reimbursement and accountability for council-related event attendance. Councillor Estevski, I think that's yours?
Yeah, I move that way.
Move that way?
Happy to second.
Seconder? Do we have a seconder? Yes, councillor Monahan. Any discussion?
I just have a couple of questions. So direct the chief executive officer to develop and implement guidelines to ensure, so we're implementing a policy, but we haven't seen that policy created yet or established. So perhaps once we direct the CEO to perhaps formulate a policy, and then we could have a look at it based on some of the comments that you've given in your, in your answer, situational exceptions and things like that. So perhaps the policy development is warranted at this time, and then we would have a look at that policy.
Sounds good.
In a similar vein, perhaps can it be incorporated into the civic and expense policy? I don't think we need a single policy for just this matter, but I think as we incorporate into that one.
Yeah, through the chair, that's a suitable proposition.
Sounds good.
Happy with that.
Happy with that. I must admit, I haven't read that entirely, but my understanding from past events is that council buys a table for some of these events, and the table usually includes, you know, 10 seats. So it's not as if individual councillors have to, once those tables are occupied, that's it. So hopefully that fits in with this. Probably need to look at that. Thank you. So put the motion?
So, sorry, can I just ask before we put the motion? So when we are incorporating this into the council expenses policy, we'll get a chance to look at the way that it's worded before we adopt that policy. Thank you.
Good, sounds good. Thank you, unanimous.
It should say incorporated and is, yeah, incorporated in the council expense and facility of whatever it is.
Facilities policy, yes. Good. Confidential item, items, book three. So the first one is a request for tender vet services and animal boarding. Remember, these are confidential, so you need to be careful with what you say.
I've got a couple of questions.
Questions?
The report says that the current contract expired sometime last year, I won't say the date. But then in another paragraph, the current supplier, I don't know if I can mention their name, has met, okay, I'm not going to mention their name, has met council's requirements under the, under the current contract. But it doesn't make sense, because I've noticed one thing in the report that sort of got my lights flashing red, was the applicant, well, the one that we're looking at giving it to, did not provide any answers to the animal welfare section, as well as there was no response given for the work, health and safety section of the tender documentation. Now, those two are very critical components. Unless I see clarification on that, I can't vote in favour of this.
Through the CEO?
Yeah, thanks. Through the chair. The first thing is the currency of the contract will remain on foot until there's a new contract. I'm sure that's in the provision. And I'll hand over to Director Planning and Compliance for any information she has in relation to the current tenders. Miss, do you need the questions from the councillor repeated? Some clarity around what was omitted from?
Through the CEO, I can provide an answer. I just don't know if I can do it in a public forum. That's my issue.
But I think you can if you don't mention the name of the entity.
Sorry, I just referred to the Director of Corporate Services.
Can I just point out that the recommendation is that we decline?
Okay, oh.
And read the recommendation, item three.
Through the chair, through the, you need to be in closed session for this if we're going to discuss it.
I'm happy if you wanted to discuss this at length, we need to go into closed session. So let's move the next item, and we'll put that into confidential. Move to the next item, which is config O two, Liverpool Youth Council Member nominations. Sorry, councillor?
Recommendation and happy to speak for it if I get a second.
This is config O two. Yep, councillor.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Keneb for seconding. I just wanted to give a shout out to the current youth council. They are an amazing group of people. Um, do some great work in the community and really happy to, um, see that we can, um, attract many, many applicants to be on our youth council and welcome the newly, new youth council in. Look forward to our first meeting.
Very good. Thank you. So we've got a mover and a seconda. Put the motion. Unanimous. Thank you. Config O three, provision security guard services, Liverpool City. Okay. Sounds good. We need to close the door, that's all.
Through the chair, it may be prudent if we are taking conf O one across to closed, that we take conf O three across to closed, and I can better describe my rationale when it comes up.
I propose that we continue with, um, the confidential items, returning to one and three at the end. So we can go into confidential once, deal with the confidential items, then come back out.
Yes, that's the idea, just do more in all the confidential ones you need to do in that session. So we're up to config O four.
I'm happy to move as per the recommendation.
Happy to second.
Councillor, seconda. Councillor Hart, uh, put the motion. Unanimous, uh, I think. Uh, unanimous, thank you. Config O five, proposed dedication of lot as public, you know the one, config O five, uh, Hornyx Park.
Happy to move.
Mover, mover, seconda. Councillor Hart, I think I heard you, and councillor McNair. Uh, put the motion. All those in favours. Thank you. Anybody against? No, unanimous. Installation of flags on council buildings, config O six.
Yes, I've got a motion. I'll wait for the, um, staff to put on the screen.
Receives and notes this report, obtains three written quotes for the installation of a nine-metre flagpole at six sites, and three open up, you can read all that. Open up.
I mean, I'm happy to explain the thinking.
For the purposes of debate, I'm happy to second it.
So councillor Monahan seconds it. So discussion?
Uh, the reason I've sort of brought it up this way is, um, looking at the numbers in the book, they're absolutely crazy. I, I'm actually getting a, a nine-metre flagpole installed at my house and it's... No, 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 I'm not saying any number, but I'm saying it's nowhere near the figures that are in the book. Um, so I, I know that also there is no budget for this. Um, and I, I think, um, point number three. Um, I'm sure there are people out there that would love to, um, you know, open up the process where, you know, I've, I've installed that, that flagpole with a flag at one site and have their, um, name, um, on a plaque. Uh, it's just an innovative thinking, uh, identifying a potential funding source. I know I would. Um, and I know there's other people out there that would do the same. So, um, this is far too important to just, um, leave it as receive and note this report.
Fair enough. Councillor Hart?
Uh, can we please get clarification on whether point three breaches any local government procurement, um, regulations or policies? As fantastic as the idea is, I just want to say that as well.
Yes, thanks. Through the chair, notwithstanding the liability issues of self-performance of flagpole installation, I'll refer to the general counsel.
So installation, um, whatever the cost comes back to council, they, public can pay for that. Um, but I'm just saying we've got to open it up to quotes because the quotes are, or the, the number in the book is, I don't think it's realistic.
So I'll refer to the general counsel for any further advice.
So I'm, I'm not entirely sure I followed the question that was asked of me. But, but the, the process which is on the screen is, is not one I entirely understand. Um, I, I can conceive of a competitive, some kind of a competitive process, although I don't think it would be inviting written quotations. And I think we would need to be clearer a- about exactly what people were bidding on, but, but, so, so we could, we could take it away and possibly come up with a process. Um, I, I, I think the intent is uh, to, to, to explore a creative way of funding flagpoles um, through some kind of, uh, expression of interest process. I, I, yeah, okay.
So we need to formulate this motion to reflect that.
Can we receive and note this report, receives and notes this report? And, um, um, you know, number two, explore options for, um, I don't know, for, um, installation of six nine-metre flagpoles.
Uh, sorry, uh, just, just for clarification, it's three poles per site, so it's 18 flagpoles required across those sites.
Um, can I, can I just say, um, in relation to that, I mean, it's going to be out of budget for someone to do that. And that's why I've mentioned the one flag, being the national flag. Now, if someone wants to put three, it's up to them, but we don't want to hold them to that. We need the national flag as least as one option, rather than having nothing, because at the moment we've got nothing.
Yeah, sorry, through the chair. So that, that was not the resolution of council, that, that's the problem. So we prepared this report strictly on the resolution of council. Absolutely understand the intent of, um, the cost reduction initiative by innovative forms and absolutely support that. But we gave you costings as per the resolution, and that involved three flagpoles. The one flagpole or one flag, um, approach is something other for council, I guess.
What about if we, um, have in there, um, we don't want to restrict someone into saying, you know what? I'm happy to pay for the one flagpole, not three. It's much better than nothing. Okay, that's fine. Leave, leave it as it is, we'll figure out a way.
Councillor, these flagpoles are on council sites, are they not? Yes, isn't that a, and then, correct me if I'm wrong, legislation indicates that you must have three. I'm pretty sure that you must have the three flags, not just one. Privately, no problem. But on council sites or government sites, I'm pretty sure it has to be three. So that increases the cost considerably.
Hmm. Um.
Councillor Carnib?
Yeah, just finally, I, I think the current report gives us, uh, without naming a number, gives us an indication of, of the number of sites, um, that may be looked at for installation. It doesn't need to be that exact number as outlined in the report. It could be less, um, it, it may be one. Uh, for example, maybe two. Um, I, I don't know. But I guess when you explore, um, options for the installation of them, um, and their, and their funding source, I guess a factor that can be considered is, is where they go and how many of them go on, on how many sites. Depending, of course, on the cost associated. It doesn't need to be, um, as per the book, for example, if costs, if, if funds don't permit.
Sorry, through the chair, I, I just also draw council's attention to the second last paragraph before financial implications, where it notes that, um, additional costs may be incurred, so we haven't identified the costs. And that also inclu- uh, includes the, uh, the replacement. But if they're not lit, then the protocols maintain that they must be, uh, taken down each night, put up again in the morning at certain times. Um, uh, there, there's a lot of protocols around flags. So I just want to understand that whilst the costs are capital costs initially. And I'll just refer to the Director of Operations, who's our flag expert there.
The other point that I would make through the CEO is they also need to be tamper-proof. We can't just put up a standard flagpole where you just do the old figure eight knot and leave it, because that will make them open to vandalism and theft. They are a particular flagpole that also then respects the dignity of the flags and makes sure that we don't then run into a problem where I'm getting messages to say, by the way, we've lost the flags, or they've been defaced, or they've been spray painted, because somebody's got access to them. So they are not a standard flagpole. I have to make sure they are secure and tamper-proof for what you know we deal with every day. Thank you.
So up to you, councillors.
Just move them up. Yep, sorry.
Sorry, through the chair, we, we still have to put in the motion, um, the how we're going to finance this. So if, if we want to explore budgets for installation and fi- fi- financing, yep.
So should that say explore options for financing and installation of flagpoles, just to cover everything? And it leaves it broad enough to, to capture anything that we may not.
Sorry, sorry councillor. So, and then, w- which not only the installation, so explores options for financing install- and the installation of flagpole, including on costs, ongoing costs. So we need to have some kind of life cycle assessment about how long does a flag last, et cetera.
Yeah, and that includes, uh, possible vandalism, all of those things and those on costs. Yeah, I think what you've done is you've actually opened up a can of worms, but that's my opinion. And anyway, uh, any other points of view? Put the motion. All those in favours. Thank you. Now we go to config O seven. Opportunity with University of New South Wales on micro-recycling research and future micro factory development. Close session?
Yep.
Oh, you did say that. I didn't think that that was.
One and three, two and one, three and seven.
Oh, I didn't. I thought I had one and three. Okay, so I'm sorry, we have to get the audience to leave.
Sorry, uh, deputy mayor, do we have to move in second?
Which?
Go into closed session? I'm happy to move that way.
I'm happy to second, that we go into closed session.
Go into closed session. Councillor McNair, seconda.
I, I'm happy to second, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, true.
Thank you for your efforts, councillor. Oh yes, we've got to do that.
Yeah, yeah, we have to do that.
Move into, yes, I keep forgetting that. So we move into
Sorry.
Open council. Somebody move it. Ah, councillor McNord, councillor AJ.
We have to go, we have to go through the resolutions, councillors.
Ah.
Just while, whilst we're in open, we read through the last three reses and then we're done.
So which ones do I have to read?
One, three and seven.
One, three and seven, so if we can put one up.
We're back live.
Yes, we should be.
Team over there, we, we back online?
Can I have resolution one up please? You mean I have to read all of that? Hmm. Right, the recommendation one is decline to accept the tender submissions in accordance with section one seven eight, one B of the local government general regulation twenty twenty one. Two declines to accept fresh tender submissions or applications for the following reasons. A, the poor response to the request for tenders and B, the known shortage of animal shelter provision providers as highlighted in the report of New South Wales legislative inquiry into pounds in New South Wales published on eighteenth of October twenty twenty four. Three authorizes the CEO or delegate to negotiate with the one and only tenderer as identified in the body of this report for the following reasons. A, the tenderer has submitted an offer to perform the services but cannot be accepted by council in its current form. B, the submitted schedule for rates in considered is considered generally competitive and reflects a reasonable cost for the scope of services required. C, the tenderer is council's current service provider and has demonstrated satisfactory performance in the delivery of animal shelter and veterinary services to date. To date, lost that bit. Hmm. The tenderer is the only known provider currently able to meet councils full service requirements, including the necessary infrastructure capacity and proximity to deliver animal shelter and veterinary care with the required parameters. Four authorizes the CEO to enter into a contract with the tenderer or to report back to council should a satisfactory agreement not be reached. Five makes public its decision regarding the tenderer ST thirty three sixty animal shelter and veterinary services. Six authorizes the CEO or delegate to execute all documents necessary to give effect to this resolution. And seven keeps confidential the details supplied in this report contain containing information on the submission received pursuant to the provision of section ten A two D I of the Local Government Act nineteen ninety three as it contains commercial information of a confidential nature that would if disclosed prejudice the commercial position of the person who supplied it. Uh, next one is number three. Right, oh, we need to go back to that. Thank you. One, that council accepts the, accepts the tenderer from below listed contractors for tender RCL thirty two fifty nine provision of security guard services for the shortlisted position for an initial three year contract term with the option of extending two times twelve months in a schedule, on a schedule of rates. First point allied integrity management group, the second business security and management solutions proprietor limited, ECS international security. Four is national integrated services proprietor limited, vibrant services and vibrant services proprietor limited. Two makes public its decision regarding tenderer RCL thirty two fifty nine provision of security guard services for Liverpool city councils, council buildings and facilities. Three agrees that council should be, should issue letters of award to the successful tenderer and enter into formal instruments of agreement pursuant to which work will be placed to panel members. Four notes that this report has been brought to council because the chief executive officer's instrument of delegation approved by council in accordance with the current provisions of section three doubled seven of the local government act nineteen ninety three only permits the chief executive officer to approve and not to reject tenders up to a value of two million dollars. Therefore, sub clause one seven eight dash three and one seven eight dash four of the local government general regulations twenty twenty one requires a decision not to accept any of the tenders for a proposed contract to be made by way of council resolution. And five keeps confidential the details supplied in this report containing information on the submissions received pursuant to the provisions of section ten A two D I of the local government act nineteen ninety three as it contains confer, con, contains commercial information of a confidential nature that would if disclosed prejudice the commercial position of the person who supplied it. Six authorizes the CEO or delegate to take any action necessary to give effect to these resolutions. And seven, uh, direct, direct that an agenda item for the next governance committee meeting be tabled to explore the direct employment of security services in certain situations. On being put to the modi, put to the meeting, the motion was declared carried, councillors voted unanimously for this motion. And the last one is oh, that's a bit shorter. Thank goodness for that. One, uh, council agrees to participate in the proposed research project with the University of New South Wales and provide a letter in support of an application by the University of New South Wales to the Australian Research Council. Two approve a financial contribution. Thank you. Approve a financial contribution of two hundred thousand dollars over eighteen months from the domestic waste reserves to UNSW, uh, to support the implementation of the project. Three agrees to grant access to the operations of six hundred Cowpaster Road Liverpool Circular Economy Centre to the University of New South Wales for the purpose of research, data collection and collaboration in the development of micro recycling applications. And four agrees to con, to con, contribution staff time to the research project. Motion that the recommendation be adopted and councillors, the, the motion was carried, councillors voted unanimously for this. Last bit, I think that's it. God, thank you very much.